Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get this month's meeting, this month's meeting, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission to order. First of all, we'd like to say, it's their adoption of the agenda. Can you change this to the agenda?
Yes, 3614 Richland Avenue has been deferred. Also deferred is the Broadway Design Guidelines, Second Avenue Design Guidelines, Downtown Design Guidelines. And because of the expected, I'm assuming many people were here for 1621 Forest, we recommend moving the violations to the end of the agenda, so you can move that one up.
Do we have, yes, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. I don't see any, but I did want to recognize if there's any council members that are in the audience that would like to say anything. Okay, seen, closed. Well, there's no public hearing about that. Okay. And we do have a public hearing. For each case, there will be one. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal. So this means eight minutes, and then you make sure you save two minutes in the end as a rebuttal after all the people that vote, that speak yes or in favor or not in favor. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they're representing an organization or a group, and they may have five minutes. The timer is there, and then staff will also aid in that. Do we have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
For move.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Appeals to the decision of the Metro Historic Zoning Commission. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ assert. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ assert to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. So, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
3614 has been deferred. 3612 Richland Avenue, new construction of infill. 2701 Woodlawn Drive, new construction, addition to an outbuilding. 2805, 27th Avenue South, new construction of an addition. 2807, 27th Avenue South, new construction of an addition. Staff has reviewed all these projects and find they meet the guidelines. We recommend approval with their conditions.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay, thanks, Jenny. Open public hearing. Any of these, any questions about any of these on the consent agenda? Okay, seen, unclosed, public hearing?
Excuse me, I, did you guys have a public comment on those?
If you had one that you would like to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. Did you understand that? So, on those, what's meaning the consent agenda? Is that what you meant?
On the consent agenda, I had two questions about two that I was talking to you.
Oh, two of them? Okay. Which two did you have a question about?
Well, actually, I want to speak about, I have questions about 2805, 27th Avenue.
Okay.
My wife asked me a question about them.
Okay, then that would mean we take those off of consent agenda since that's, if you want those two. So, per the public, then we're moving 2805, 27th Avenue South, and 2807, 27th Avenue South.
And 2701 Woodlawn.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know I made up the numbers myself. I'm sorry. 2701 Woodland?
Woodlawn.
Woodlawn?
And 2805, 27th Avenue South.
Okay.
Not, not 2807, 27?
Yeah, so, if I understand, then what's on consent agenda is 3612 Richland Avenue and 2807, 27th Avenue South. Commissioners understand that?
Yes, they do.
Okay. All right, thank you. All in favor? Do you guys understand what?
We're making an announcement.
Yeah, I need a motion first.
Most of the two accept the consent agenda with two items I mentioned.
Okay, have a motion and have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, we will start, actually, we don't, since the overlays are all been deferred, we will start with these two that are on the consent agenda. And we'll start with 2701 Woodlawn Drive.
I will go back. I apologize, I do not have slides for this, for these two items. So, 2701 Woodlawn Drive is an application for an addition and an outbuilding. It's related to the project at 2805, 27th Avenue South. It's the same applicant as is 2807, 27th Avenue South. And they are located at the corner of Woodlawn, this property's at the corner of Woodlawn and 27th Avenue South, and the other two properties are further down, just kind of behind it, on 27th Avenue South. So, let me just pull up my notes. You, even though I don't have slides, the commissioners do, should have, should have received the staff recommendations with the drawings. The existing house is one-story, and the new addition will also be a true one-story addition. It, the house itself is fairly small, it's about 1,300 square feet, and it sits on a large lot that is 11,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing a true one-story addition. The house, the addition, though, will be about three feet, six feet taller than the historic house. Staff finds that this extra height to be appropriate in this instance for several reasons. One, the lot slopes up, providing a challenge to build an addition that is shorter than the historic house. Also, the back of the house, the ridge of the house, the ridge of the existing house is fairly small, it's just about 14 feet at the front. So, the extra three feet, six inches is resulting in, in an addition that is about 18 feet, six inches at its maximum height, which is still fairly modest in size and scale, and still well within the range of new construction, I'm sorry, range of historic construction in the immediate vicinity. So, for those reasons, staff felt that the extra height of the addition was, met the design guidelines, and was an instance where it was okay to have an addition be slightly taller. Also, if you look at the plans, the roof form is hipped, and that kind of helps to minimize the impact of the extra height. The addition is located entirely behind the historic house. It meets all of the base zoning setbacks. Let's see, the materials are typical materials we see, five-inch cement, fiberboard, lapped siding, architectural shingles, windows weren't indicated, but staff will ask to review and approve those before their purchase and installed. And, let's see if I can meet some of the other points. The addition, the footprint of the addition will more than double the footprint of the historic house. Typically, the commission likes to see footprints no more than double the footprint of the historic house. The existing house is about 1,300 square feet, and the applicant is proposing an addition that will be about 1,840 square feet, so about 500 square feet more. Staff finds this footprint to be appropriate for two main reasons. First, the proposed addition is a true one-story. Many additions that MHCC approves are one and a half to two stories in height, but because of the shortness of the historic house, the addition can just be one story in height. Second, another reason why we thought the footprint was appropriate was that the existing house has a relatively modest footprint on a large lot. Again, the lot is over 11,000 square feet, the house itself is just about 1,300 square feet. The larger footprint for an addition will have less of an impact on the historic house and the historic neighborhood because of the large lot size. Looking at the outbuilding, it is an outbuilding, it won't be used as a dadu, this neighborhood is zoned for single families, so daddus are not permitted. It is also one-story in height, and staff finds it to be subordinate to the historic structure. It also meets all the base zoning setbacks. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about the addition. Oh, do you want me to go ahead? Do you want to talk about this one first, and then present the other one, or do you want me to present?
Well, since they are, since they already have a connection, maybe we go ahead and do that.
Sure. Okay. So, 2805, 27th Avenue South is just down the street. It's that one on the top there. It is, again, about, it's a one-story brick bungalow constructed in, constructed about 1940. It, this, this lot has a fairly significant slope, so the applicant has been able to design an addition which, with an attached garage, and the garage is fully at the basement level. So, staff finds that the attached garage is appropriate in this instance because it's, you know, it's inset from the back wall of the house, and it's also at the basement level. Let's see, the addition, the addition's foundation and eve heights will match those of the historic house. Its ridge height will be lower than the ridge height of the historic house. Let's see, the addition is inset appropriately, and it meets the design guidelines in that sense. The addition will add about 1,200 square feet to the footprint of the house, which is just a little bit over 1,200 square feet. So, in this instance, the, the addition is about doubling the footprint of the historic house, which the commission has permitted in the past. Let's see, it does meet all of the base zoning setbacks, and the materials will closely match those of the, will closely match those of the, of the historic house. Brick walls, stone foundation, architectural shingle for roof, cement fiberboard trim. The windows and doors were not indicated, so staff would want to review those prior to purchase and installation. Let's see, the roof form of the house, of the existing house, I'm sorry, the roof form of the addition will be hipped with a slope of 612, which meets the design guidelines. Staff found that all the window and door openings met the design guidelines. And again, there is no outbuilding proposed because there is an attached garage. So, for both these projects, staff is recommending approval. I'll just, because I didn't read it before, for, so for this one, for 2805, 27th Avenue South, we're recommending approval with our standard conditions, including that staff approve all windows and doors, the brick sample, stone sample, the roof shingle color, and the location of the HVAC. And then going back to the 2701 Woodlawn, again, very similarly, we are recommending approval with staff's final approval of all windows and doors, the roof color, the location of the HVAC, and there is one design condition, that's that the, that the doubled and triple window openings have a four-to-six inch mullion in between them, which is a standard thing that we ask for.
Great job. Most of, do you have any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. If you want to come in, let's start with, this is through 2701 first, Woodlawn. And if you would, just come up and state your name and address.
Would you like to start with the applicant?
Yes. Would the applicant like to come forward and first? State your name and address.
Manuel Zeitlin, architect, 516 Hagan Street. And I'll defer to the neighbors with questions, I really don't have anything to add to the staff, other than, than just to point out on the first one, we started out with a one-and-a-half story addition, that the footprint was the same size as the addition, as the existing house, and staff asked us, would we be willing to change it to a one-story and make the footprint a little bigger, so that worked out, that worked out fine. But, but both cases, we, you know, we are restoring the existing house and trying to do a compatible addition to each of them.
Well, you have some time at the end if there's some, yeah, in case there's questions. Okay. Now, open public hearing. Sorry, I jumped ahead.
Right, and the experience of this stuff, so.
Well, that's okay. The consent threw me off.
So, so, my name's Tim Richardson. I live at 2705 Woodlawn, so I guess two houses down from this white house here. So, and then also, I guess I wanted to talk about 2805, 2805, 27th Avenue, the next house that at the top there, at the next slide, that at the top there. So, that, there's that, those two houses are on 27th, and then there's a, to the right of the top house, there's now an empty lot that's been cleared, so I assume they're going to build on that lot, too. And that lot that's been cleared, sort of is perpendicular to my backyard, so my backyard kind of runs into that, so just to kind of set the scene. And I just have some questions, you know, we're not necessarily against this development, but this house here at the top, there's a little piece on the right that we've been told is already, they've already been given permission to demolish part of that house, and it looks like they have, if, there's a little sort of wing coming off to the right, and we've been told that, and so, and it looks like that, for that, in order for them to build the house next to it, that demolition would have to happen to meet the setbacks between houses. And so, we're just curious why and how and when the decision was made to allow them to demolish part of that house, since it is a historic house, and, and just wanted to kind of know, was, was, is that demolition, part of the house demolition necessary to build the house next to it, and just how that decision was made? So, just curious about that. Number two, if, if they are going to build a house on the lot next to that, which again would back up to my house, when are they going to give us plans for that, or how does that process work? When will we see plans for that? And I'm, really, I'm curious about that house, because I've been told by the developer it's going to be a two-story addition in the back, and it's going to look right down in my backyard, which currently all have is trees and birds back there, and not a house with windows looking in my backyard. So, I'm just curious about those plans. So, those are two questions. I also noticed that, um.
That's time.
Oh, can I stand a little bit now?
Well, you're, are, we're still on just 2701, how much, are you on your last one?
A couple more questions, so, real quick. So, we noticed that the, this house, there's a garage behind it, the white house, there's a garage behind, it looks like they're going to have to dig, to me. That lot, that lot is not significantly sloped, I don't know where that came from, but it's pretty flat. So, if there's digging, are they going to be blasting? Because it was blasting when they put 440 in, a lot of the houses were damaged, I just wanted to know if they're going to be blasting to dig those basements. Also, there are NES poles running behind, to the right of this house at the top, and there's a right-of-way right there now, and those, the crews come in when there's storm damage, and the crews kind of take care of the storm damage and replace the lines. Is that access still going to be there for NES? Those are, those are my main questions.
Okay. Because I think that the applicant can answer all those questions, except for, can we answer just a demolition question for him? And then I think we'll have, basically, the answers that you were looking for.
Great.
So, and it'd probably be better, Manuel, just afterward, if you show them the plans, but if, if you want to say something, Manuel, right now, as far as rebuttal?
Do you want to ask?
Yeah.
Just answer the question.
I didn't know if they had the answer for that yet or not.
I can answer the other question.
Okay.
Sure.
So, the, if I remember them all, the, we'll start, the question about the NES easement, there isn't an NES easement. The NES used to come through, like, some, one of the neighbors' drive, like, down the neighbor's driveway to get to the back of the adjacent houses, and I think, my understanding was one of the neighbors talked to NES about it, and they explained that they've just been using somebody else's yard to get to their, their poles, that now they'll have to come through that person's yard rather than going through somebody else's yard. So, there's not an easement along there. In terms of the house on the, we were, we were trying really hard and working, because staff was great, working with us back and forth, and we, I thought we had a week, applications were the first week of the month rather than the last week in previous months, so we tried to design five houses in a week, and, and ended up just doing the three existing ones, because the two new ones, we're working on trying to get the scale smaller than the, our initial designs were. So, we're in the process of trying to bring the scale of those down, so we pulled them, and hopefully it'll be submitting those next month. But we'll certainly take into consideration, you know, now that you raised it, just where windows are placed and try to avoid you feeling like you're being looked on. Is there, was there one more question, or?
Oh, and. There was a demolition part of this house, and it's.
Yeah, no answer to that. And then, and then the other question was that, there is a pretty good grade from 20, from Woodlawn going up on the 27th lots, where you were talking about, the garage steps up a little higher than the front house, but we'll be doing a little excavation behind the front house to create a patio for both, you know, sort of between both buildings, but there won't be any blasting, it's pretty modern. And then on the other, the, let's see, the lot where we're putting the garage at the time, 2805, there's, again, there's considerable slope, so they want, we're like doing almost a split level, where you're going down a half level and up a half level, so they're not going to have to really excavate much to get that garage.
Okay. All right, thank you, Manuel. And did you have a answer for the partial demolition?
Yeah, so, the, we issued a staff-level permit in July to demolish a side bay, because it was over the property line, so it was, in order to kind of make the lot next door buildable, it was a bay that, I don't have a photograph of it, but there is a photograph of it in your staff recommendation. It's all the way at the very back of the house, and we felt that it wasn't a significant part of the architectural significance of the house, so we permitted its demolition. We also permitted the demolition of an outbuilding at the rear, so that will be demolished as well.
Okay.
Is it true that without that demolition, you wouldn't be able to build a house on that vacant lot?
Well, let's, yeah, if there's any other questions, maybe after that, if you, if you, that way we can keep going, but if you, and I think Manuel probably is open to show you any of the plans or anything, he's, so, if, later on, so we could probably, if that's good, we can keep on moving. Now, did your, continue the public hearing, did your wife also have something she wanted to say?
Oh, she's coming up, let me add, the demolition that was approved was on the 2805, 27?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, it's 2805, 27th Avenue South. There won't be any demolition to the house on Woodlawn.
The what now?
The, the house that faces Woodlawn, 2701, there's no demolition to that one, yes.
All right, all right.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, my name is Rita Richardson, I'm at 2705 Woodlawn Drive, wife of Tim Richardson. And to follow up on that, we were just curious about, I guess, procedure and how, like, we had no idea that, that that was happening, and if we could have had a voice in that, we certainly would have liked to, and so, that, mainly it's about procedure was our question for that, so. I don't know if Manuel will be able to answer that, or if you're the better person. Is that something that's just decided without sort of public input? Is that?
No, there, there are notice given, yeah, just as.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question, were you talking about the demolition or the?
Yeah, the demolition of that, the portion, the, the future demolition of that little portion of that historic house.
The partial demolition was administratively reviewed and approved. The commission's given the staff the ability to approve minor alterations that clearly meet the guidelines, so that one wasn't noticed, wasn't before you today, because it was administratively reviewed.
Right, that's the, and, and that was my husband's question, was because that, that gets into the, the construction easement of the future house, it's going to, we, we just have a concern that that decision was made, and now we're going to have another house on a 50, you know, foot-wide property, because you're able to move that, to demolish that, so, that, we just have, you know, concerns and questions about that.
Okay.
So, I'm actually, there's another question that my husband didn't ask about the service from the NES pole to the, from that house to the poles that run along the back of our properties. That, all that, all the properties on Woodlawn and that house, and not all of them, but several of them, are serviced by that line, and I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to, to not agree with Mr. Zeitlin, but the easement, if you will, whether it's official or not, was, was on the, on the empty lot that's next to this house. A truck would use that alleyway, if you, it's not an alley, but the yard, which is an empty lot, to service that line, and that is until the last time we've had service to those lines, that's how they got there, was through that empty lot. So, whether there's an official easement or not, that's how NES gets to those poles.
Okay.
I'm actually here also to speak for my neighbor, Linda Wrightout, who lives at 28, excuse me, 2703 Woodlawn. So, she is next to the little white house that you saw in the previous slide, and then her property is perpendicular to the one that we just left. So, she's affected by two different construction zones, if you will, and she's, she's been living there for 23 years. Linda's here today, and she's unable to speak, so I'm speaking for her. She's been in the house for 23 years, for 32 years, sorry, and until just the other day, when they cleared the empty lot, she had privacy. And so, now, since they've cleared it, she can see right into the properties on 27th Avenue. And so, what we're all worried about is that when this additional house is put on the empty lot, it's going to be, it's going to be a two-story, we hear, and it's going to be looking down into our, into our yards and into our houses, into our windows. And so, we just ask respectfully that the architect and the developer take our privacy into consideration.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, glad to. And I will allow, Manuel, if you have one more minute of rebuttal to those, and, so, you can take your seat, yeah, for.
Yeah, just two seconds. So, when we, we went to the, did a side visit with, I think, Tim and Robin at the side to look at that side addition, and one of the options Tim proposed was actually sort of shifting the property line to keep the addition, but it actually would have, that would have caused this new house to impact the neighbors even more, because it would have pushed it further to the north. So, by actually removing that addition, it actually minimized the impact on that lot, because it allows the house to be a little bit further away from that, that, from that side of the, of the yard. Was there anything else I was going to say? And then, and again, I think just the fact that, that we had the property survey, and there is no NES easement, it's not, it's just that they were using open space to get to the yard, so, thanks.
Okay.
And, and, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I remember the other thing I was saying, just in terms of sort of, working with neighbors, we just finished a project that the commission approved at, at Woodlawn, and, I mean, Belmont and, and Linda, and, and the neighbors, you know, Robin can fill you in, but the neighbors behind us across the alley were concerned that all of a sudden, same thing, they had, you know, it's looking down on their house, and so, we got with them, we've actually planted extra trees, we've, we've added some louvers on the back windows, so they don't feel like they're being looked on. So, our clients, you know, very sort of sensitive, and will go out of the way to try to minimize those impacts.
Thanks, Manuel. Maybe then, Manuel and staff can help them, show them plans and answer the question, so. So, okay, I'm on closed public hearing. I know that was a little odd, I was trying to get them both done at the same time, since we have, we were taking off consent. Are there any questions, though, that the commission has? Let's, we'll take them first, one by one, for you guys, the 2701 Woodlawn Drive.
I just have a general question. When, when NES uses, like, private property to access kinds, those kinds of things, I mean, I mean, they're going to have to get in there, I mean, do we ever alert NES? I mean, it's not really our, not our charge to do that. It's, it's sort of NES's issue, okay, all right, I mean, that, that we don't, we don't have any authority over that, nor do we want to get involved in that.
Okay, are there any other questions about 2701 Woodlawn? Okay, have a motion?
Move to adopt staff recognition.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. And then, the other one was 2805. Any questions about that first?
Remove to adopt staff for affirmative.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, and then, let's see, you and Manuel can follow up with the, just kind of answer those questions. Okay, thank you. So, with the deferrals and moving violations to the back, the next one is 1621 Forest Avenue.
This request is to demolish a historic home at 1621 Forest. Based on economic hardship, it was damaged by fire. The home was constructed in 1925 and is a contributing building to the district. The lot is number 46 on the plan of Lockland, a subdivision of Chadwell Place in East Nashville. The first known occupant was Ernest and Alice Latham. Ernest was a U.S. Deputy of Agriculture, was a clerk for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and Alice was a teacher. The craftsman-style and bungalow form of the house is typical of this development period for the neighborhood. The construction of bungalows began to replace the construction of the then-more dominant neoclassical styles that are also found in the neighborhood. Most of the neighborhood, most of the bungalows in the neighborhood are also craftsman-style. We don't see these types of cases very often, so I'd like to review what economic hardship is, as I scroll through some of these post-fire photographs. Economic hardship is not about the financial hardship of the property owner, but the hardship of the property itself. In this way, we ensure that people are not treated differently, although their property might be, because of course it is different. The process requires a property owner to establish that disapproval of demolition denies them of all reasonable beneficial use or return on the property. In the past, this has been reviewed as the cost of basic actions needed to meet code, plus the amount paid for the property versus current estimated post-rehab value of like buildings in the overlay. Expenses not associated with the fire are not appropriate for economic hardship calculation. I'd also like to review the different roles in this process. It is not the role of staff to prove that there is, or there isn't, economic hardship, as that is the role of the applicant. Please understand that this is not a situation of staff versus applicant, it is simply our role to analyze the information we've been given. In this case, we attempted to assist by asking our sister nonprofit to pay for two consultants to provide additional information. In this case, we have four experts in their respective fields stating that the front half of the building is rehabable. To be honest, we've never had that amount of agreement in an economic hardship case, which just makes this one a little more difficult for all of us. We also have four experts providing conflicting information and guidance, we think, because we're all working from incomplete information. We are told that a true estimate can take up to twenty hours to prepare, that a more complete engineer report is really needed in order to create a true estimate, and the estimates from subcontractors are needed. To my knowledge, none of that has been done yet. Our analysis is not an attempt to create a revised estimate for rehab, but to reinforce that we're all working from incomplete information. For instance, public comment received noted a math error in the staff report showing a loss with one of the estimates provided, and a potential profit gained by the other. With such wildly different numbers provided by two consultants, with information from one consulting appearing to contradict another, with the consultants, with the consultation of the high estimate claiming that they did not have enough information to put together an accurate estimate, with the inclusion of costs that are not relevant to the economic hardship review, with the fact that this is only the economic hardship, that this is the only economic hardship case we can remember, where everyone agrees that a portion of the building is rehabable, we just did not feel like there was enough information for us to provide a recommendation of approval for you. Your report provides a more detailed analysis. With the information provided, staff recommends disapproval of the application for full demolition, finding that it does not meet Section 3B to A for appropriate demolition. Lisa George, who is referenced in your staff report, is here today, she's primarily here to answer any questions you might have, but she's gonna take a moment to introduce herself and just provide some general information right now. Lisa? Are you ready?
Yes, could you come to, yeah, and state your name and address, Lisa?
My address.
And your address.
Lisa DeRouge George, 178 Cajus Ferry Road, Lebanon, Tennessee. I was asked by the Historic Commission to just come and make an observational walkthrough of the house, which that is what we did, I was there probably, maybe an hour, hour and a half at the most, just to observe the fire damage that is based upon my experience of the, I've done fire restoration for, I don't know, twenty years maybe, and based upon my observation, there are many parts of the building that is savable just from cleaning, there are parts of it that are going to have to be replaced, once the cleaning is done, then you will know exactly which ones, but it's probably, of the roof system, it's not even half of the framing members that would need to be replaced. So, I mean, just based on what I could see, there's, you know, we had flashlights, there's no, you know, real lights, it was my observation that the house is savable.
Okay, any, anything else you want to add, and we'll probably still call you if we have any questions about anything, unless there's anything else you want to add right now? Okay, thank, all right, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your case?
Prior to starting the clock, I'd just like to say, my name's Adam Dred, 691 Harpitz Place Drive, I spoke to Councilman Withers, who's the councilman in this district, he's unable to be here today, and she's at a League of Cities meeting.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for hearing us.
We did get his letter to.
Did you get a letter?
Yeah, we did get a letter.
Okay. I'm, I'm a former city councilman and volunteer attorney for Todd Austin, the homeowner. I heard about Todd's plight via Facebook and offered to help out. On June 16th of this year, he was out of town, and electrical fire destroyed his home, his six beloved pets, and everything he owned, and what State Farm declared a total loss. He's been working on this house for twenty-two years. Todd did exactly what he was supposed to, and he hit a roadblock with this commit, with this staff. Tim Walker showed up at the house, the destroyed smoky property, and met the owner and contractor. He never shook anyone's hand or said anything about, sorry for your loss. He asked what they were doing, they said they wanted to take it to the foundation and build it back exactly as close as they could, and Tim just said, we're not gonna let you do that. The report by the staff is flawed in several ways. They did meet the requirements for economic hardship just based on the demolition and the replacement costs. When the numbers are accurate and weren't, and haven't been adjusted by your staff, you can see that it should be taken to the foundation. The first consultant hired on the demolition did agree with that, he is not here today, the second consultant who is here. The staff report makes numerous false claims, the contractor will tell you more about. One of the most telling is saying that the high-grained 100-year-old beadboard above the roof should stay as it's 100 years old and not replaceable. Commissioners, that wood is from Home Depot and was replaced by the owner himself in 2011. The report says a lot is salvageable, and frankly, it's, it's just not. This is tragic and unfair, all my client wants to do is go home and not smell smoke and be reminded of that terrible event for the rest of his life. He's not an out-of-town developer putting in multiple skinny houses or McMansions, he just wants to go back home and get on with his life, and your staff's trying to take that from him. Your staff either made careless or calculated errors, and you, as commissioners appointed by the mayor and council, to protect the city of Nashville and its citizens now have the chance to right a wrong. We're just here today to ask for a full demolition for the project, to use the money State Farm has given him, that's all they will give him, and to have him go back to his home. By the way, we've had over 10,000 citizens sign a petition asking for you all to do just that, only 443 signed the Fort Negley petition. Thank you.
Listen, I can't have an outburst like that, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but if we get an outburst like that again, I'll have to ask people to leave, so, I understand we've just gotta keep on moving, but I appreciate you being here, but no, no more clapping.
Don, you have two minutes?
He's part of the, whatever time he's on.
Yeah, you get whatever's left.
I think there was seven minutes.
Yeah, shot clock is on. Don Canar, Blue Chip Restoration, 2120 Utopia Avenue. You guys know why I'm here. I have Todd's insurance company, State Farm, the largest property casualty insurance company in the United States. State Farm Insurance considers Todd's home to be a total loss, okay, you should have that documentation. I have a structural engineering report from Tony Locke stating, based on the conditions of the observed fire damage, the framing and decking from the entire roof system should be removed and replaced. Again, that is Tony Locke, structural engineer. The front section of the resident main floor framing has some salvageable soundness, but, but, the wood, post-piers require reinforcement to ensure proper support bearing, to ensure rebuild, code loading, and applicable performance. Therefore, it was discussed that replacement of the residence would be easier and cost less to completely replace the entire framing. I have a letter from the man the H, the Historical Commission brought out to look at the property, your man Pierre Howe, okay? Pierre said, "The wood floor system, heavily charged, smoke damage for a majority of the remaining structural floor components, the front one-third floor area is not showing the damage as the rear two-thirds, however, the replacement suggested for many flooring system components to ensure structural integrity and compliance with today's current building codes. Wood walls and ceiling systems, heavily charged, smoke damage for many of the remaining components, replacement suggested for most of these structural components throughout the middle and rear portion of the structure, however, the front area where the wall covering is mostly smoke damaged, some structural members within these cavities should be considered usable components. This is only one-third of the overall structure. Roof system, heavily charged, smoke damaged, and most of the remaining members, replacement suggested for all roof components." In closing, where replacement suggested was noted, is intended to ensure a safe, sound, code-worthy structure that might be more economically feasible to achieve if rehabilitation of this structure on its existing foundation is desired. Keeping in mind that a great deal of safety preparation, environmental mediation, and current codes criteria should be considered when evaluating the rehabilitation of this structure within the magnitude of the damage. Also, time can be an important factor to consider with such a labor-intensive project to rehab as it stands. In black and white, there's a lot of buts and a lot of howeters. So, to use your own man Pierre's words, we're talking about rehabilitation, and is it okay with this group that we talk about the restore a pre-loss condition? The Historical Commission's main focus is restoring the pre-loss condition, the outside appearance or the facade of this house, and I believe that's a fair statement. When we talk about pre-loss condition, we being State Farm, Tony Locke, Pierre Howe, and Blue Chip Restoration, we're talking about the entire house. The problem is that we, that if we do save the front, we do save the front, the cost to save it will put Todd Austin in economic hardship. Todd does not have the infinite amount of money to spend on this project. If Todd has to spend the money he was given by the insurance company to preserve the facade, it will greatly impact restoring the interior of the house to pre-loss condition. It is right to say, it is, is it right to say you must keep the front looking exactly the same for historical reasons, but for the inside, the part that you live in, the part of the house where history is really made, you just slap it together, and who cares what it looks like? Well, the homeowner cares. Ladies and gentlemen of this commission, I have a house that is sixty-six, over sixty-six percent destroyed, I have the same letters as you, and they say the same thing that I'm saying, that the cost to save this house would be cost prohibitive, and the roof needs to be taken completely off. I have the estimates, I have the plans that were submitted to this committee to build an exact replica of the house within Todd's budget, and more importantly, I have Todd Austin, Todd, take it away.
Seriously. Okay, I'm Todd Austin, 1621 Forest Avenue. I've lived there for 22 years. I used to have to chase crackheads off my porch, and now East Nashville is one of the top neighborhoods in the country. I'd like to think that I've been a part of that progress. I was there for the tornado and the flood, literally weathered the storms, and turned my home into something very special. The loss of my home has been devastating. We lost everything, including seven of my cats. The trauma has been overwhelming, and sometimes I don't think I'll ever sleep again. But now I'm at risk of losing my home entirely. The cost of repairs mandated by the staff are estimated to be about $100,000 more than if we're allowed to take it down to the foundation and build a replica. Simply, my insurance won't cover that. Put yourself in my place for one moment. The idea that I may have to surrender my home forever because I can't afford to make repairs someone else demands is unfathomable to me. I understand the legal issues, but I think there's a moral issue here as well. Historic preservation is designed to enrich lives, not destroy them. The overlay is not intended to push out a longtime resident who suffered a tragedy, it's there to preserve the character of the neighborhood. I believe that character is more than architecture, it's the people who live there. Case in point, a week after the fire, a group of my neighbors threw us a fundraiser. One by one, they came up and introduced themselves, hugged us, and told us how much they loved us and begged us to rebuild and stay. Ms. Ziegler once asked me, what will we do when we ask, when, when the people who ask for this overlay call us and say, how could you let that old house be torn down? I believe my neighbors will be calling to ask, how could you force Todd out of his home? No one in this room, no one in this city will ever mourn the loss of my home more than me. I get back to the conversation I had with Pierre Howe, the consultant hired by the staff to survey my home. He spent over thirty years working for Metro Codes. He told me, Mr. Austin, I love these homes, I love the architecture, the character, and the integrity with which they were built, and I want to see them preserved, but, he said, sometimes, common sense just needs to come into play. You all need your home back. Ladies and gentlemen, I just desperately want to go home, please don't prevent that.
Thank you. Okay, well, and let the record show, you have a minute for rebuttal afterward.
Can we reserve that minute?
Yeah, you can reserve that minute for rebuttal. Okay, open public hearing. First, I'd like to have all the people, people who are for, who are, who are in favor of the staff decision, okay? Say none, are you have, okay, please, yeah, come forward, and state your name and address. If there's any others, please come forward as well.
My name is Elizabeth Smith, I live at 1800 Russell Street in Lachlan Springs, and I'm here today representing the Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association. I'm past president and current member of the board. This is a difficult situation, because we in Lachlan Springs consider ourselves to be a very tight-knit group of neighbors, and we do understand the, the emotional loss that we are dealing with here. Just gonna read the board's stance for you. "Thank you for your work in conserving the historic character of our neighborhood. We know this is a difficult and often thankless job, and we applaud your willingness to uphold our design guidelines. Although Lachlan Springs is a large neighborhood, we cultivate close connections with each other and are sympathetic to the plight of our neighbor at 1621 Forest Avenue. However, we strongly believe that the guidelines must be applied and another solution for the homeowner must be found. Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association asks that you disapprove the demolition request for the home at 1621 Forest. There is not sufficient evidence that the building is not viable according to the information that we have. One reason we value the guidelines in our overlay is to protect structures in just this type of situation. Every effort should be made to rehabilitate the building. We support the staff recommendation of a new rehab estimate from an experienced professional working in conjunction with a structural engineer. At the very least, we must require substantial and relevant evidence to the condition of the building before taking the irrevocable step of demol, demolishing a contributing structure. Although the public engagement in this particular case has been extraordinarily great, many of the people speaking in favor of demolition do not live in Lachlan Springs and have not been a part of the process of applying the conservation overlay. Residents of Lachlan Springs are so committed to protecting our history that we have recently invested time and money to extend the overlay to the pockets that were not included in the original plan. Contrary to some allegations otherwise, staff at Metro Historic is simply doing what our guidelines demand of them. The Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association supports the staff recommendation to disapprove the demolition of 1621 Forest. Not only do we risk losing an historic property, but we also risk setting a dangerous precedent that cannot be undone. And Hans Schmidt, our current president, asked me to point out that in the Metro Code of ordinances, seventeen point four oh point four two zero, which is the determination of economic hardship, the very first point that we have to consider is this, an estimated cost of demolition and any other proposed redevelopment is compared to the estimated cost of compliance with the determinations of the Historic Zoning Commission, and we, in all the information that we received as a neighborhood association, there is no estimate for new construction. So we respectfully request that you deny the applicant and his effort to demolish 1621 Forest. Thank you."
Thank you. Are any others in support? Thank you. Also state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Nell Levin, I live at 1611 Forest Street, and my husband and I, we're the ones that had a, had a party, a fundraising party, with all the neighbors for Todd and Abby right after the fire, and we very much stated to them, we want them to stay in the neighborhood. We raised money for him and Abby, and I've thoroughly read and studied the report from the Historical Commission, and I think I have a gist of it. You know, as was stated earlier, Historical does not have the, an accurate estimate of what it's gonna cost to rebuild, because there has not been an engineer's report yet with all that information. I agree with what Elizabeth said, that once we start making exceptions in our neighborhood, we're, we're on a slippery slope as far as our historical conservation. I've been in the neighborhood for 20 years, I very much support the historical overlay, it's what's kept the historical integrity of our neighborhood, which is very important. So, that's, that's one thing. Secondly, I really, I think the best way for Todd to stay in our neighborhood, and I really want him to stay in our neighborhood, don't get me wrong, I really do, is that would be, is for him to rehab his house. And I find it very difficult to believe that it's gonna cost more for him to rehab the house than what it's gonna cost for him to rebuild a new house. With the housing boom that we have going on today in Nashville, cost of building has gone through the roof, and typically, often with construction, there are over, there are overruns on the cost, and also, I don't think that he, from what I understand from the report, he cannot build a new house on the foundation that he has now. He would definitely have to put in a new foundation, that's an additional cost, plus there's lead paint and asbestos and special things like that, that would have to be removed, and that, that is all in the report, and that would drive, and an additional thing that would drive the cost up. If he rehabs the house, according to the comps that are in the report.
I'm sorry.
He would have a house that would be worth at least $350,000. So he.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Are there any others? Okay, now, everyone who would speak against staff recommendation, and please just come up and get in a line if, if many of you are speaking, and just since there's a lot, try not to repeat things that you've already heard, just, you know, if there's new information you want to say, or if it's just a straight confirmation. you want to say, or if it's just a straight confirmation.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we do have someone speaking on behalf of a large group of, for the, a five-minute speaker on behalf of the petitioners who couldn't be here.
Sure. Well, is it, you represent a group, I guess?
Of the petitioners who couldn't be here today.
Yeah, I guess I'll defer up to you guys. It's okay? Okay. So the, right after her, you can start lining up afterward.
First of all, I'd just like to address something that Nell said, that there was no engineer's report, and that there was no cost for new construction. Right in the staff's report, it gives the cost for new construction is $260,000, and there is an engineer's report also included in the staff's report. As far as Lisa George and her fire certification and her experience with fire restoration, she has not renewed her II CRC certification since 2012, and therefore is not certified in restoring buildings after a fire.
Do you mind giving me your name and address again? I'm sorry.
Heather Mortensen, 1621 Forest Avenue.
Okay, thanks.
I'm speaking as a representative of the 10,000 people who signed my petition on change.org but who cannot be here today. The Historic Commission staff are not serving the interests of the people of Nashville. It's evidenced by the outcry of this petition. I'll do my best to some of the words and disbelief of those people. I say disbelief because many of them can't believe that signing this petition is even necessary. How is it possible that such an injustice is being perpetrated? Any rational adult looking at this situation can realize what has been done to us is wrong. When I asked for the reason they were signing, almost half of all the responses to my petition were because it's the right thing to do. Simple ethics applied to the situation show that supporting Todd is the right thing to do, but it appears the director and the staff are lacking in this department. The people of the petition wonder why the Historic Commission staff has wasted time and tax dollars trying to steamroll a Nashville citizen after a house fire, when so many important buildings all around Nashville are being razed and developed by developers each day, such as the climax and the houses on Music Row. For years, I've supported what I perceived to be the good works of the Historic Commission and felt so sorry that they didn't have more power to stop developers. I was devastated to witness the demolition of the buildings in Printer's Alley where I work. But in dealing with the Historic Commission staff, I've learned so violently that the Historic Commission staff has almost unlimited power with no checks and balances to regulate their activities. We all know what this is about. Money talks. Developers have money, and we don't have any. People of the petition feel that this is about greed, and frankly, so do I. Tim Walker, Robin Ziegler, and Historic Commission staff have maliciously attempted to discredit Todd and his contractors, and in their refusal to work with him in a reasonable manner is evidenced in my report. When one of Tim Walker's own neighbors suffered a tragedy, his reaction was to take a hard-line stance against this person, and his motives for this are questionable. I just cannot understand how one human being can look in the eyes of another who's suffered and is hurting after a house fire and decide to pursue a course of action that would lead to the utter destruction of that person's entire way of life. I shudder to think how many helpless homeowners have suffered this way before with no way to fight back. The only reason we're standing here today with the press in this room and 10,000 signatures on my petition and the people behind me supporting us is because Todd Austin is a Nashville icon. Upon meeting him, the staff saw nothing more than a long-haired rock musician and thought they could get away with what they did. But to the people of Nashville, he's one of the city's kindest and most valuable citizens. How many times have everyday people who are unknown and can't boast the support of thousands been beaten down this way, and it's been shoved under the rug? How many times before us has the staff gotten away with this sort of behavior? Is my ardent hope that they will get away with it no more. There are news reporters standing by, waiting on your decision, to tell the world what has been done to us. A denial of our request for demolition will be a black eye on the commission and the city of Nashville that won't suit and disappear. The thunder will be deafening, and the people of Nashville will not stand for such an injustice. The commission has the power to end this injustice right here and now. I hope you'll exercise it.
Thank you. Others just like to come forward, and make sure you state your name and address.
My name is Raymond Russell, 1317 Riverwood Drive in Inglewood. I'm a 34-year resident of Nashville. I've lived in Inglewood for 18 years, on one of its premium streets. I enjoy having a historic house. I don't believe your purview includes, to the degree it does with Todd's house, our house, but we're very concerned about, about keeping our neighborhood like it is, or at least as close as it can be to its historical value. I'm one of the grumpy old men. People call me that every day, because I rail about the buildings that have been razed on Music Row to make room for parking lots, to make room for condos. I rail about, bless her heart, Megan Berry, because it seems like someone who's been here and who cares about this place can't get a sidewalk. But if you come from out of town and you represent a larger tax base, you can wipe out almost anything and put up two tall skinnies. I'm that grumpy old man, and I'm here to tell you something. I know it's about numbers, but there's something that hasn't been said about Todd. We're not great friends. We don't party together all the time. But everyone who knows Todd, if I could get a show of hands, or has seen Todd, knew about his '64 Corvette. This is the man you're talking about here. This is your preservation of history. He used to drive downtown in a '64 Corvette, which he restored, which was destroyed in this fire. It was showroom. It was absolutely showroom, because he has so much reverence for the history of something that was made before he was born.
Thank you very much.
Dave Pomeroy, 1813 Cedar Lane, 37212. I'm a 40-year Nashville resident and president of the Nashville Musicians Association, AFM Local 257. I've known Todd Austin for many years, and he is a respected member of our community. Having endured a house fire myself in 2009, I have some idea of what Mr. Austin has been through, but regardless of his personal trauma and tragedy, the problem here is a bureaucratic one. At a time when inappropriately designed and poorly constructed buildings are popping up all over Nashville, what Mr. Austin, a longtime resident of East Nashville, is trying to achieve is far more appropriate and respectful of our city's history than much of what we see going on all around us. Mr. Austin's intent to honor, is to honor the historic quality of his neighborhood is clear, but he does not have the financial resources to jump through the series of obstacles that have been placed in his way. All he wants to do is rebuild his house as a replica of the original building. To force him to rebuild using the severely compromised remains of his destroyed home defines logic and any reasonable ethical considerations and practical construction guidelines. Mr. Austin has documented and presented thorough and convincing evidence that the process and determinations of the Historical Commission were incomplete and compromised. To do anything other than to allow him the variance he needs to proceed with the rebuilding would be a serious black mark on the credibility of not only metro government and the Historical Commission, but all of Nashville. We may be the it's city at the moment, but that will end someday, and we must not forget how we got here, by being respectful and supportive of one another and working together to find practical solutions to our problems. I implore the Historical Commission to reconsider the unreasonable restrictions that have been placed on Mr. Austin's efforts and allow him to rebuild not only his house but his life in the place that he belongs. To deny this will send the worst possible message to longtime Nashville residents who do not have the resources of the builders and developers who are doing far more to compromise the character of our neighborhoods than any individual could ever do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk today. I'm a native Nashvillian. My name is Bill Brewer. I live at 709 Vale Court. I'm a real estate broker. I'm also a home builder. My dad was a home builder, so I've been around construction all my life, and I've only worked on one burned-out house, and it was mine 20 years ago. So I know a lot about what he's going through right now. Todd's had a disaster. He's lost his home, his possessions, and his pets. He's caught between a rock and a hard place right now. One side is the insurance company trying to limit their losses; the other side is the Historical Commission that is trying to make sure that the integrity is protected, but nobody's considering the cost of that, and it's going to be substantial. I was, I was out of my house for 10 months. The insurance company only refused to pay six months for me to rent another place. That's the game they play. And so, this has already cost him a significant amount of money, just in the delays up to this point. He'll pay for it at a later date. My house had 5% of the rafters charred, but codes came in and required every rafter to be replaced because the structural integrity had been lost due to the heat. I was in Todd's house. His was every bit as hot as mine, so I disagree respectfully with the woman who just said you can save the roof in there. He's also, from a real estate perspective, if he resells, he's going to have to disclose if he leaves burned members, or structural members in this house, which you'd have to do to keep that front facade. That's going to cost him on his resale value. When a disaster hits a city, I think our government should stand there and help them. They should streamline the process, show some empathy by letting the kindness and compassion that I know this body possesses show through. You know, go ahead and approve the demolition, let him get his life back in order, and you guys can go on, all go home and sleep well tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Joey Jackson, 6006B Don Allen Road. Ladies and gentlemen of the Nashville Historic Zoning Commission, please realize that your actions in this case will contribute to not only your history and reputation, but that of Nashville also. If you accept the staff recommendation, you and Nashville will soon have a reputation for putting more value on old boards that have been damaged by fire, water, and chemicals than on the people and neighborhoods of this city. I love the quirky old buildings of downtown Nashville, and it pains me to see even a rundown old warehouse be torn down. I see gentrification sweeping the city, and it also pains me to see the quirky old houses disappear, only to be replaced by two tall skinnies. I too want the historic buildings of Nashville to be preserved, and I believe it's a worthy objective, and I applaud your efforts. However, the old boards should never be more important than the people who love them and lived within them. You seem to be forgetting that the history of 1621 Forest Avenue was and will be created by the people living there and not by the old boards and plaster. Please remember that a neighborhood is not created by the buildings in it, but by the people who live there. By acting to protect and preserve the burned, water-soaked, and chemical-contaminated boards of Mr. Austin's house, you would destroy the home that Mr. Austin lovingly created, and that would be shameful. All of the effort put into saving the old boards should be channeled into finding a compromise that saves the home and preserves Mr. Austin's unique contributions to the character and fabric of this neighborhood. I realize that protecting historic buildings in downtown Nashville is especially difficult, given the invading hordes of developers, excuse me, developers, all eager to profit on Nashville's recent popularity. But instead of working against Mr. Austin and treating him like one of those developers who just wants to tear down the house and build two tall skinnies, you should be working with him, trying to find a compromise that allows him to rebuild his home. Ladies and gentlemen of the Nashville Historic Zoning Commission, there comes a time when we must value people more than old boards. This is that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Greg Troyer, 3552 Glen Falls Drive. I've lived in Nashville about five years. Todd was one of the first people I met in this town, and I love this man. The community loves this man. Anyone who knows this man knows this is a good, honest, hard-working man. The Historic Commission and what you guys do is a wonderful thing, but to force someone who has lived in this community 20 years, almost longer than I have existed, to force good homeowners out of their homes, honest, hard-working, tax-paying citizens, through no fault of their own, through a fire, through a tragedy, he doesn't, he didn't deserve that. He didn't do anything wrong, and he is losing his home, the place he has lived, for longer than some people have been alive. The child in the back, you know? It is a terrible tragedy. I know that not, you know, everyone here believes in a higher power, but for those of us who do, a just God would say, "What would you do? Whatever higher power you believe in, what would that higher power do? Would it say, 'Well, the paperwork says this.'" As far as slippery slopes go, and a trend we want to set, if your house is destroyed beyond reasonable repair by a fire, then that's a slippery slope I'm okay with setting, saying, "You know what? If it's beyond repair, then tear it down, because it is not reasonable to force him to have money he does not have." A man who works hard, who just wants to go home. We can all go home tonight. He cannot. And I want this man, who is loved by almost everyone in this room and almost everyone in the city, he deserves to go home.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ava Meyer, and I'm, I live at 1805 Rose Bank Avenue in Inglewood. I was Todd's real estate agent when he and his ex-wife originally purchased the house, and when I heard about the fire, I contacted him, and I had a rental available. So he's current, he and Abby are currently tenants at my rental house in Inglewood. And time is of the essence here. The insurance company has agreed to pay six months of rent, and we, there's only, that ends at the, in the end of December, so we're coming to an end of that time period, and there could be possible extensions, but that's not guaranteed. He's only had six months of rent guaranteed. In the course of my work, I ran into Tony Locke, ironically, in a completely different situation. He's a structural engineer that I've had dealings with over the years, and we, in our conversation about this house after we finished our other business, I asked, and he told me that he felt like this, it was possible but not practical to repair this house. And personally, I find it somewhat surprising that no one has talked about the fact that the house was sort of remodeled in the 1950s with the asbestos shingle and the inappropriate rotting columns on the front. And I just think that it, in the, that it would be more of an asset to the community to allow this house to be taken down, or at le, if you tied, if you took the shingle off, you'd get to old wood siding underneath the original, which was, is probably damaged. And if you took that off, all you've really got left is some old charred framing that is not really historic or has much to do with the house. And I just think that a newly-built house that is safer, more efficient, and cost-effective would be a bigger asset to the neighborhood, and I'd like to see it have, meet the guidelines of the original house with the appropriately sized width siding and columns that would look more like the original 1925 house that it was in the beginning. I think that would be a better decision. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Lazras. I live at 201 Baltis Roll Road. But before that, in 91, I moved to Lachlan Springs, and I don't know if there was a beautification or a homeowners committee looking after the appearance of the neighborhood. There are many good things about that, but having a gentleman who's willing to rebuild from scratch in the same likeness of what he lost is an asset, especially to the beautification committee. That's someone you want on your side. I've known Todd a long time, and I know his penchant for excellence and quality. He cares. He was painting this house a few years ago and really cares about the look in his property. I happen to be a very big fan of property, property rights and property ownership, and everyone else drives by the property. Todd lives in the property, and I hope you'll see fit to let him build the house back the way he would like to. I appreciate your time, and one constructive thing, having two boys in Boy Scouts with the potential wood that you wanted to save, make Music City birdhouses with it. It's, after all, it is Music City, and he is, in many ways, Music City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Naff. I live at 1213 Firefly Road in Hermitage. I've known Todd in excess of 20 years. The last 15 of those years, he and I have played music together in his basement. In that time, I've gotten to know his neighbors, his immediately surrounding neighbors, and to, and to get a feel for what he means to them. To a man, they all consider him to be a wonderful neighbor and someone they want in the neighborhood. To show you how far that carries, not only is, is Todd entitled to that sort of, that sort of gratitude from his neighbors, but it extends to everyone who ever comes over to his house. Like, say, I've been coming in and out of his house 15 years now. I know his neighbors. I greet them like old friends. They greet me like old friends. They greet anyone closely attached to Todd as someone they want to have around. That sense of inclusion is a beautiful, beautiful thing. Todd is standing in a place where he may have to lose that. Given the muddiness of the actual multiple sets of numbers we're looking at concerning the costs and whatnot, I would really implore you to please pay a greater amount of attention to what he means as a fixture in his neighborhood, and don't fixate on the costs that much, because those numbers are not solid. What is What is solid is the people in his neighborhood want him. And I want to continue to go and be among them when we rehearse at his house. That just seems like a terrible thing to lose for the reasons he stands to lose it. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeanette Nichols. I live at 834 Near Top Drive, 37205. I've known Todd ever since I've moved here, been here almost 15 years. And during that time, I've seen the change that has happened into our, what some people will say, big little city that we have. It's grown to be a huge city, and we're losing the character that we've had here for so long. And part of that character is the places that we go and the people that we see. And one of those places that has stayed and maintained has been Todd's house. A place where you could go and be welcomed, even if he didn't know you. You were welcomed, and you felt loved, and you felt like you were home. I would hope that you would take a moment and put yourself in his shoes, or maybe you're one of your family members. What if that were to happen to them, and they were to be in a Hard Rock, place in a Hard Rock, sorry? I would just think that you would take a moment to think about that and how it would feel if your mother or your sister, or even your best friend like mine, could possibly lose the home that welcomes so many and has loved so many. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Michael Nichols, 834 Near Top. So as the Historic Commission's central mission statement states, and I do quote, "To preserve, protect, and document the history, historic places, buildings, and neighborhoods of Davidson County through education, technical assistance, and advocacy." Be remiss not to add to the statement that the history of Nashville does not lie solely in the bricks, mortar, and lumber of our buildings, but in the people, like Todd, the long-term residents that give this city its deep-rooted character. Todd Austin is one of these residents. He's always been around. A man whose very presence instills the spirit of Nashville, whether he be standing on a stage, within a bowling alley, in a backyard, or on a 20-foot billboard. He's a man who loves his home for over 20 years, and to say he was devastated by this tragic loss would be a dramatic understatement. To be clear, Todd has no intention of tearing down his house to build something bigger and better, to put up two skinnies, as everyone had said. He wants his home back. He wants to maintain the character of his neighborhood by rebuilding a replica house that by preserving and protecting the historic nature of the neighborhood, having the, and having the undue burden of attempting to rehab what is clearly a total loss, is, is not fair. It, it forces him from his home, his neighborhood, he, I ask you to take this into consideration when you're making your consideration, when you're making your final decision. This is not a man who deserves to be thrown out of his house. Also, in the 30 seconds I have left, I just want to point out that nobody has actually mentioned the fact that this fire was caused by faulty, by bad wiring. Now, this notion that we can just slap some paint on the part of the house that's still good is, is not going to be the case. Lead, lead paint, bad wiring, asbestos siding, these are all things that are going to have to be remediated and dealt with. The cost of this is going to be astronomical. Think about a small little repair you have in your house, multiply it by 100. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Kevin Williams. I was born in 1972, roughly eight miles from where this house stands, so I'm a Nashvilleian native. Todd Austin moved here because of Nashville being, just like everyone says when I travel, they love coming here because everyone is so friendly and good to each other. He made this little home in East Nashville 22 years ago, when it was known as East Nasty. You didn't walk outside without a weapon. He's thrown crack addicts off his front porch, but he stayed there because he believed in the community. He believed in preserving what makes Nashville unique. He's wanting to replace it as act replica to make as the house was in the 20s. This man has been so much to this city and does so much to so many of us. When the flood happened in 2010, this city rose up and picked those up that were down. When did we start pushing down our own people? We lift each other up when we're hurt, when we're down. That's what Nashville is about. That is what we're trying to do. That is what he needs to do. He just wants to go home. Each of you get to go home to your home every night. Todd doesn't. He's been out of his home for five months dealing with this. This is a heartache that most of us will never see. This is the hardest thing next to losing your parents, because he has lost everything he cares about, everything he's compiled over the years. You can't bring the lives of his animals back. I've seen this man go through so much heartache, and he needs a break. Please have some compassion. Please have some common sense. The staff, their recommendation is preposterous. This man just wants to go home. Preserve Nashville. People are more than just a structure. People is what makes this city what it is and why we are growing. I ask that you please, ruling his favor, to replace the home as he sees fit. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, can I get your address?
Pardon me?
Can I get your address? Your address, please?
My address, 4010 Omaha Court.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jason Wyatt, and I live at 702 Wedgewood Park in a big condo building that sits on a spot where a lot of old houses were that actually got knocked down to build the condos. I've known Todd for about 19 years, but I actually knew of him for about a decade before that, because he's such a fixture in the community. He's one of my best friends, and he exhibits a prime example of what true friendship is. It's hard to watch him go through this ordeal with getting his house rebuilt after he already went through the horrible experience of having his home and, and his possessions burned. We've had many conversations about this, and he absolutely gets what the goal of the Historical Commission is. He'd already gone through a terrible divorce and struggled to come up with the money to keep the house, and he truly cherished that house. He just wants the house to be back the way it was, where it fits into the neighborhood and looks great, and his neighbors want this too. When the city is continually knocking down old houses and historic buildings to put up condos and tall skinnies, it seems completely unfair and illogical to keep Todd from building his house back from the ground up simply because a small minority of the house is able to be preserved at a much greater cost to him. I've worked on Music Row for 25 years, and I continually see old buildings, sometimes that have historical, considerable historical value, get torn down in the name of progress. I've signed petitions and attended rallies to save a lot of them. Sometimes it works, and sometimes it doesn't, but this is not that. The main historical value Todd's house has is that it has great history with his friends and those that care about him. I myself have so many cherished memories in that house. He wants to preserve that history. Please allow him to do that. It's only right and logical and the thing to do.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Franco Hashiguchi, 5401 Country Drive, formerly East Nashville resident of 20 years prior to my moving. That's why what I wanted to say was that with the greater cost of rehabbing the house using the existing members, they would have to cut corners somewhere in the part of the house that they had to construct anew. I would rather they start from a level foundation and make it the best house they possibly can in the style that it's supposed to be, so it's safe and he won't be exposed to the possibility of another tragedy from having things done sideways. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Senzak, 1111 California Drive, 37129. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak today, although it feels wrong that my friend's having to endure this process. He's been through enough. I'm a native Nashvilleian. I've lived here on and off for my entire life. Todd moved here in the 80s, which is pretty much an eternity in comparison to most people in the city right now. We've seen so much change in Nashville, especially the last decade, that it's pretty much enough to make your head spin. I've had discussions with Todd about all the change in the town, some for the better, some for the worse. Seeing that we remember, what we remember about Nashville that we knew of 20-plus years ago gets swallowed up and transformed all in the name of progress is a tough pill to swallow. While we love seeing the city grow and earn respect on a national level, we still have good memories of the way things used to be. I bring this up because you won't find a bigger advocate of keeping the history of Nashville intact than Todd Austin. The thought behind the historic overlay is a good one, and in a rapidly changing city, it's a good thing to have in place. As a native Nashvilleian, it can be heartbreaking to see so much of the historical landscape I grew up around being bulldozed and transformed into tall geometrical boxes that are suitable for large groups of bridal parties that are renting our city for three days at a time. My own grandmother's house in the Belmont area was turned into a duplex, rendering it completely unrecognizable to the place I enjoyed visiting as a child. I bring all this up because the person being squeezed out in this situation, Todd, is probably more in line with your way of thinking than you can even imagine. That's what makes this situation so frustrating and unfair. Todd's not looking to build a tall and skinny in the place of his home. He's not looking to become some rich Airbnb landlord, Airbnb landlord. He simply wants to recreate what was there before and go on with his life. Having rules and standards in place are good things, but I feel the staff recommendation is a case of not seeing the forest from the trees. Todd Austin has been a part of this neighborhood for 20 years. He's just been a solid citizen, a member of the musician, and a member of the musician community. He's one of the most generous people I know and is always there to help others. That's why I hope we can all do something today to help the commission reconsider the staff recommendation. Let the man go home. He's more than earned it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lawrence Cam. I'm an attorney here in town. I live at 2205 State Street. It's a 111-year-old building. That's not subject to any of this kind of overlay because it was, been so adulterated over the years that it doesn't really have any historical significance per se. The point I like to bring about this building is, I don't know sure why you guys are all excited about it. It's obvious that it has been changed before. The front, the window on the front is not the original window. The porch roof isn't original. The supports for the porch aren't original. The fascia on it's not original. This is a middle-class house from the 1920s, and its historical value is kind of questionable at this point. But even if the house is rehabbed at a cost of $100,000 over the cost of rebuilding it, it'll only be 33% original materials when you get done. So what's the difference? I mean, it's, if, to the people in the neighborhood, if Mr. Austin puts back a house that looks just like it, are the people that drive down the street going to know that it's 100% new materials, or 66% new materials, or 33% old materials? It just needs to go because it's economically unfeasible to do anything with it. Common sense dictates, excuse me, common sense dictates that y'all need to let it go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. Carrie Pagetta, 2703 Bluefield Avenue. I've been working on this project since August 8th, when I met with Paul Hoffman at the Historic Commission when I went to pull the original permit for demolition. When I talked to Paul about the difference between pulling a permit and then meeting with the Historical Commission, he told me that the building permit was for the structure and the Historical Commission was for design. He said that plans were needed with elevation. I went back to the office. I hired an architect to create plans to design the same home that Todd lived in, because that was what Todd wanted. So this is my question. If the Historic Commission's mission is to preserve the design, and we have presented plans of the design of the building that match what was there previous to the fire, why are we here today? If the house can be demolished and rebuilt with the money that Todd is receiving from the insurance company, and the expert will not give a dollar amount to refurbish and clean the wood because her fee is too much for Todd to afford, when we have provided our estimates for free in rebuilding, but yet she won't come up with a dollar amount of what it would cost and cannot guarantee that you can remove the smoke from the rough sawn wood? It is porous wood. There's no way to guarantee that. We believe it would cost more to, to clean the wood than to rebuild the house, and that's what we recommend. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tom Larson. I live at 1907 Holly Street, right around the corner from Todd. I am a huge supporter of the Historic Commission and what they've done in the overlay. I've been very disappointed in watching homes, even on my street, that have gone up, that don't seem to follow any of the original character of the neighborhood, and I've questioned how they got approved. I wasn't at the hearing for those, so I didn't have a say, but I've been questioned, I've watched repeatedly homes come up that didn't match the original home, and time after time after time, and it just seems to be the people who are building those homes and doing those things and building right up to their neighbor's property line so close that it's inches on their property line, but that person is a, works with codes, or is an attorney, or is a doctor. And in this case, this is a beautiful home that Todd is trying to put exactly back to where it is. And at the end of this process, and at the end of this hearing, the Historical Commission will go on to the next case, the Lachlan Springs Association will go on to their next case. Todd has to live in this home, and hopefully this home will be around forever, looking exactly like this is. Just make it work. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Glenn Kikendall. I live at 1505 Beechwood in the 12th South area, and I too live in a house that's similar in size to Todd Austin's house, and we also have a zoning overlay. I wanted to point out that I think one of the toughest things in this is the insurance company's payoff, State Farm, is really about $100,000 shy of what they consider a replacement would be. I talked with State Farm yesterday on my own house, because I'm also at State Farm, and I was surprised at how low in dollar amount my house was. And I said, well, I have a friend that's had the same, it's kind of had a problem, and can I up that insurance? And they said, well, we can do about 15% maybe without raising questions. Point is, is I think, taking in light that a lot of people in this country are insured by State Farm, their numbers should be pretty realistic, which makes me really question that State Farm really anticipates a fair amount of new construction, if not full new construction, and something they consider total loss. And we have a situation here where, at least from what I can hear, saving the house, or saving portions of the house, could literally cost $100,000 more than State Farm's willing to cough up. So it just seems not right, and I, I agree that I think we need to make an exception here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Scott Hutchison. I live at 1012 Seymour Avenue, and I appreciate the work that the commission does. It gave me great pleasure recently to tell the new owner of a house that's next to me that's in a historic overlay, that she said, well, I think maybe we'll just tear it down and build something new. And I said, well, actually, you're in a historic overlay, and that might actually be pretty difficult for you to do. And so I was very satisfied knowing that homes like that were protected. And I don't really have anything to add from a policy standpoint, but I do know, as I'm sure you're kind of getting, that most of your decisions probably end up with someone being either satisfied, pleased, or maybe annoyed and a bit angry. Your decision today will be the turning point in Todd's life. And I know that's probably not something that you often have to deal with, since much of, much of your work deals with procedures, and we're very thankful for that. But just keep in mind, as you go through and make the decision, that he will look back on this, and I hope Todd lives to be 101. And if he does, he will remember this day, and that he will remember it as a, as a time that something changed much for the better for him, or something changed much for the worst. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Judy Rose, and I live at 1615 Forest Avenue, three doors down from Todd. I just want to say that not only he's been a perfect neighbor, but his house has always been one of the prime spots on our neighborhood. We have so much respect for Todd and the way he upkeeps his home. I was there the night of June 16th when the house broke out in fire. Actually, I was there for all four of the fire calls that were made. That's 14 hours that that house was under distress of smoke and fire. I have the utmost respect for our historical I have the utmost respect for our Historical Commission, and I also have the utmost respect for Todd. I've read both reports that have been submitted by the Historical Commission and the ones that Todd has had submitted. And I do believe that the estimates made by the commission are inaccurate and they're not complete, as where Todd has done the due diligence and had the experts to comb through it in a much more thorough manner, and I kind of believe that his are a lot more accurate. As a neighbor on our neighborhood, I can't tell you how important it is for us to get that, those boards off those windows and get Todd back in that house. And I promise you, as an investment in our neighborhood, that old wood is not going to make any difference whether it's there or not. I just ask of you to do the right thing. This is his house, his decisions and his expenses, and I trust him that he will make the right choices and do a beautiful job. And I thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and stand up for him, because he's worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, y'all. My name's Warner Hodges. I live at 652 River Rouge Drive. I've been in Nashville since 1973. I've owned a property in Brentwood. I build houses. I'm a musician. I don't know anything about this East Nashville, West Nashville thing. I'm a West Nashville redneck. That's exactly what I am. I never got the East Nashville thing. Still don't. But Todd did. Todd bought there when it was like, why in the hell would you buy a house in East Nashville? He did. He believed in it. He made the house a home. He cared about it. He took care of it. Told me all kinds of stuff he'd done to it. I helped him do a little bit of stuff with it. I do know, as a owner of that house, he will take care of that house. He will build it back. He actually believes the East Nashville dream. Sorry, I don't. He does. I think that's an amazing thing. It's a benefit to the community. Todd deserves to go home. Please let him go home. He will build that house back as close to the house it was as humanly possible. I know he will. Thank you. I had to say that.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Dimples. The address is 314 East Thompson Lane. My family came up on the original white boats and started in Nashville. I'm a longtime resident, over 60 years. My grandparents' house in East Nashville is still standing, and my dad refurbished it at one point. I've known Todd for several years, and I've never met a nicer, more gentle, more dedicated person to his house and his neighborhood. When a house burns, there's more to it than just the structure. It is the people in it. But it's also building codes of our today's standards. And I support Todd in all the historical things I've seen lost here in Nashville. I support in what he wants to do, which is rebuild his replica. Please let him do that. Please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dave Fowler. I've been a resident, I live at 1151 Birdwill in Gallatin, and I've known Todd well over 20 years. And I was with Todd. We've been friends a long time. And I was with Todd when he went through his divorce. It never once entered his mind to leave that house. I recently asked Todd, I said, "What if the commission doesn't let you do this, Todd? What are you going to do?" Todd said, "I don't know. I'll probably leave Nashville." It would be a real shame if you guys deny him that. Thank you for letting us all come speak today.
Thank you. Is that all for public hearing?
There is that one minute of rebuttal time.
We will give you that. Thank you.
Thank you again, Adam Dred. Folks, thank you for being so patient. Thank you all for coming out to support Todd today. Couple of points of clarification, and the woman from Lachlan Springs. We did submit plans for the house, and the commission has those. And I believe, do you all have this report? Thank you. And in those plans, it is for an exact replica. It is to put that house right back where it is, looking exactly like it does in that picture. I was there two days ago on that porch, looking out across the street at plastic garage doors that certainly aren't historic, and the house over there with giant new skylights on the roof that certainly aren't historic. This man and this contractor are trying to come in and put in something that is exactly that. Now, you've heard from all these fine folks. You heard from the one person that I believe was sent in to the consultant, who actually sent us a contract to pay her $2,500 if we wanted her to put a bid on the house. And you've heard from all these friends and neighbors giving their time, leaving work today to keep Todd in the neighborhood. Please join the other 10,000 people that signed that petition, and let's put Todd back in his home. We're all spending Christmas with our families in our homes. Todd is going to be on his way out of his rental house then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make a clarification for the record. Chairman Brian Tibbs had to step out. Vice Chairman A. Bell is taking over. We did have one commissioner who came in, since she was not here for the beginning of discussion, that she cannot take place in the discussion of the item, and she will not be able to vote on the item. But we still have five members present, so we still have a quorum.
Thank you. Could she participate in the discussion? Could you ask questions? Okay. All right. Just to remind the audience that when we close public hearing, that means there should not be any comments from those who want to, because again, public hearing is closed, and that it will be an internal discussion between the board members. Thank you. Board?
Is that not how we're closing the hearing?
Yes. We're closing public hearing. Commissioner, we have a challenging project, and I do want to make a comment to Mr. Austin that you, your friends have shown much support for you, but we thank you for that, all your support. And we know that we are also bound by some heavy, high-standard guidelines, and to say that this is not a personal matter, this is how we view things so that it will be fair to the public, and so not taking one applicant, but for the good of the whole. Thank you. Could you, just so that we...
Because we have so many people here today, it's going to be very important that we turn the microphones on and then speak directly into the microphone.
All right. I'm trying to read my notes, too. To give us the criteria that the staff use to gain the dollars, and I know that, not a long explanation, but to give us sort of another background. I know we've read the reports, and it goes back and forth, so.
In short, we tried to look at what would be the value of it if it was rehabbed, and so we looked at surrounding properties that are similar in size and that are historic and they're in the overlay. And we also looked at, of course, what it would cost for rehab. But that's where, in new construction, but that's where it gets a little tricky, because the numbers varied so greatly between the two consultants. And at least one of the consultants told us that he really needed a better engineer report in order to give a true estimate, that what he gave was a guess of it. So again, we're kind of working on incomplete information, but that was the attempt to compare the cost of rehab, the cost of purchasing the property against potential rehab value.
Okay. All right. I've got random questions, so they may... When was, when were the Lachlan Springs guidelines written and adopted?
Before my time.
Probably not before mine, but I just need to...
Before mine, too. Before mine, too, but it was in 1986. That portion of the overlay was adopted.
Okay. Okay. With those, when those guidelines were written, was this structure as it is, I guess at that time, considered a contributing structure?
Yes, it was. And I believe it's also listed as a contributing property in the East Nashville Historic District, the National Register District.
Okay. All right. Y'all chime in if you have any more questions, but the foundation, where, I mean, I'm still looking at the foundation, and a comment was made that they probably would have to rebuild a foundation because they couldn't build a house on top of that. Where did the fire start?
It was in the back of the house, in the basement.
Okay. All right. Okay. I know, I mean, I'm also a resident of East Nashville and have just recently had what property right next door to us that we own fire, and the State Farm person, well, we're dealing with the same things, because the cost of construction right now, we can't even start. We're just hoping that we get the exterior and the windows replaced. But so I'm very understanding of that. I know when we say that the roof needs to be replaced, I mean, that can be done under restoration. I mean, it's not like, I mean, all the components can be added. The other thing I want to, I guess, point out, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if it is demolished, to conserve and preserve those structures that are original and historic significance, if a new structure is built back, we would not want a structure built just like that. I mean, and...
And you're right. I mean, that's typically what you see, is that you're looking for something that speaks of its own time. If it was built in 2017, 2018, it should speak for that period. But there is a possibility of reconstructing an existing home. This would be a good candidate for that, because we know exactly what it looked like. We've got pictures. They've created drawings. We know the measurements. So it'd be easy to reconstruct, and I think it would meet those requirements.
Okay. And that was my misunderstanding, because I always think that we don't want something built like, that looks like it's old and when it really isn't, because it takes away from those authentic things. Of the things that... I'll muddle on that, but I do want to make the comment and agree that, Todd, you're awfully lucky gentleman to have as many, many supporters.
Right now.
Again, we are so sorry that you had to deal with this. I can't imagine the emotional trauma that you have gone through, so we certainly understand that. And again, you are truly blessed to have people here that have your back in such a way, and we definitely appreciate what you've contributed to the city of Nashville. And although we can't consider the emotional state of an application, I do consider the safety. So I was reviewing some of the reports, looking at the mold and some of the other issues that are on the interior of the home. So that would be my concern for you in regards to just having to restore what's already there versus actual demolition or a full rehab of the property. So I would like to see additional information in that regard, because we want you to be in a space that is safe for you and safe for everyone that's in the community as well.
Robin and Tim, just is the main, I know we all, we look at to be a hardship. It's not if the owner can afford it. It's not, that's, I mean, it's just not what it's about. It's about if you rehab the property, if it's, rehabbing the property costs more than you could even sell the property for, you know, that's, that's the hardship. It's a property versus property, not owner versus property. So is that what we're looking at on page 14, the, of the, this little chart here? Is that essentially, is this essentially the case for...
Are you talking about that weighing of the value?
Uh huh.
Yeah, that's one way. That's how we've done it in the past. But you're right, the economic hardship is about showing that someone doesn't really have a reasonable use or a potential for return on a property.
Okay. But I mean, that's essentially what this is. So, you know, it's got the purchase price, the two estimates. So the thing is, so that's, the numbers that it's showing are the estimates after they've been cut through the staff evaluation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And even with that, with substantial numbers cut from both the estimates, the delta is now 8,500 and 3,700?
The delta?
The difference?
Oh, the difference. One shows a potential for loss and one shows a potential for profit.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So that's a...
Yes, I mean, that, just the concern I have with that and those numbers, I mean, A, that's, you know, nothing in construction standards, those number. I mean, you can spend that, any one thing is, when you're inside a home, you just don't know until you get in there and start demoing. You just don't know. You don't know what it's going to be. I mean, wiring, everything. I mean, just for disclosure purposes, I watched the News Channel 5 footage or News 2 or W Karen of the fire. I mean, they had reporters on scene and, you know, witness video, and I mean, the fire started in the basement. If the fire started in the attic, I think this would be a no question for all of us, because everything goes up. Fire started in the basement, in the back, very large fire. I mean, smoke was billowing out. They had a ladder truck dousing the house with water in the footage that I viewed online. So I don't, just the thought that there, it wasn't water dam, you know, and some of the, some of the things say, you know, there wasn't water damage evident, there wasn't, you know, the smoke, everything rises, everything comes up. So the smoke had to escape somewhere. You know, there's a point in the staff report where it says only soot was visible on that beadboard, and the, well, that's because it came through the attic and it had to escape. So it came through. It's not just random soot. So the whole attic was compromised by smoke. The whole house, in my opinion, it's not a large house, was compromised by smoke. Rough sawn wood, in my opinion, contrary to Ms. George, you can't get that smell out. I mean, very difficult to really eradicate all of that. It's in every crevice. It's in every cavity of the home. That's just, you know, my opinion. And then the engineer's report does have pictures stating, you know, that the roof doesn't meet code, you know, you can't tear half the roof off, the other half still doesn't meet code, and it was still fire damaged, or smoke damaged, the front half. So I don't know what the thinking is on that. I mean, if you tear off the roof, that's the whole structure of the front, that's the whole, at that point, I just don't, you know, I don't know what there is to be saved, I guess, in my opinion. If you, if you're replacing the whole roof to start, that's the rafters, that's the roof system, that's everything gone. And then you're left with replacing all the doors and windows. That's another thing. So those aren't, I just, I don't know. That's, I don't know what there is to salvage at that point.
Just a matter of discussion here again. We're looking at numbers where blue chip, MCR group, and the numbers that, just clarification, but the numbers that the staff has pulled together. So we're looking at, clarify for me, please, that those are three different numbers. So the other thing is that the insurance company has also given an estimate, correct?
I don't believe it's an estimate. They've given information about what they will pay.
So I would take that as an estimate.
Trust me, it's not.
Well, where I'm getting at is that specifically, as what you've mentioned, is that once you get into the building and, you know, that, that adjuster is going to come back to site. Or you're in, you know, there, or the insured is going to go back to the company and say, "Well, this is," or they found more construction issues that they didn't see the first time. I don't, I, I've also been through a fire, several, and have had renovations, so it is devastating. I can say that, too, because it's personally happened to my family with devastating finality. So I can definitely appreciate your emotional on that. But I think where I'm trying to say is that if you've got, you know, some things that are hidden and you can't see those, I don't know that we have enough information in terms of how, you know, there's absolute numbers. These are, these are estimates and they're comparisons for the conversation here.
Yes, that's true. But I mean, you really can't, I mean, to get a non semi-gestimate, you, you couldn't without starting demo of the house. So I mean, I get, if that's, if that's the point, if that's, I'm not sure, you know, sure if you start the demo, then you look at, oh, you know, if you start to try to clean, if you start the demo. But again, just, you know, from the, I mean, the, you know, the engineer's report, you know, stated that most of the roof, if not all of the roof, just needs to be replaced. It's not even up to code, you know, the floors need to be replaced. So I just don't know at that point what, what's still left.
You know, let, let's talk a minute about the expertise of the engineer and the other contractors. Have they had experience over preservation renovations? You know, I think we depend on people who, professionals and credibility of people who have been in it for a long time and can say, yes, these are within line, or, or there needs to be some adjustments.
Will there be a question to the applicant? Are you wondering?
Well, just for internal for a moment, they're hearing our conversation, Kwan. So just, Robin, was there anything in your, in the staff recommendation paperwork that had engineer credibility background?
In terms of the engineer, I don't know about his rehab experience. We've gotten reports from him before, and I think he's very qualified as an engineer. Contractors, obviously, Blue Chip is very qualified on emergency repairs, disaster repairs. I don't know about their experience with rehab. MCR does have extensive experience with rehab.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Commissioners? I want to make sure we all can have a matter of opinion because this is a pretty serious case. We are held to a high standard and
Inquiry, just looking at the historical appropriateness of the home, as we mentioned, it's, you know, originally from the 20s, but there's obviously been some revisions throughout the years anyway. So what truly is the home contributing to the area? And we don't want to leave it in such a state that it could create additional issues, whether it could be anything else, any other disaster that could happen to the property that's not currently inhabited. So you never know what that can turn into over the long run. So if the home is demolished and rebuilt, what would even be the contributing factor if we said you have to replace it with these wrought iron columns, so on and so forth? I'm thinking out loud here, I'm processing my thoughts as well. Because it is a serious case, we want to make sure that we are thoroughly analyzing every aspect of it.
So what I'm hearing you say is that the replacement materials are as like as or better? Is that what?
I would, my gut instinct is a full demo of this property and rebuilding it to current standards so that we can make sure that there are no other possibilities for additional fires in the future or any other issues that could take place.
But at that time, and I'm just asking of staff, is at that time rebuilt as a, like, it is, it no longer is a contributing structure. Is that correct? So the historic significance of that is gone. Okay.
Will we feel more comfortable requesting additional reports from engineers? Or are we at this point able to make a decision for either demolition or preservation?
I think if we ask for additional information, we're going to have to be specific about what we're asking, what, what we need to see. I, I don't think we can just say, we need a report. I think we need to give a lot of direction. Because, I mean, they've spent a lot of time
Absolutely.
And energy to put this together. And if, if we need, we need to be specific if that, if that were the case.
Again, as I mentioned, safety is a huge concern. We want to make sure that we're not forcing someone into a space that's not compatible or safer than the long run.
It, it sounds like some of the commissioners may be wanting more information. I just want to be clear that we would, or the commission would not be able to unilaterally defer the application. It would have to be an agreement between the commission and the applicant. So if, whatever the action that's taken, it's either a decision today or in agreement with the, with the applicant to defer it.
And I think just to reiterate that, the recommendation is the application for full demolition. And the suggestion of the staff is to allow the reconstruction of the fire damage portion of the house and rehab of the front portion. So, you know, we've heard the applicant to say full demolition. And, and again, the staff is not contradicting the full demolition. I mean, they are, but part of that is with consideration for those areas that can be rehabbed, rehabbable.
You're concerned about the roof? I mean, I think, I mean, even, even in a rehab, that roof has got to be replaced. I mean, that's, that's a known factor. So, I mean, that's, I know it was your concern, but I know that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I just, I mean, if you look at the house, the main architectural structure to me is the shape of the roof and the roof structure. I mean, that's what makes it the style of home that it is. So the whole roof is gone. The, the whole entire house has to be gutted. I mean, even the exterior will, you know, with all the escaping smoke coming from any opening that it could find, that's every opening that was there, which is now, you know, boarded up. I mean, that's, it's in all the cavities, it's come up through the floor joists. I mean, it's just an entire gut, and then the roof is gone. So I'm just asking, I mean, what is physically still there? If we, you know, I mean, everything is off, like the, the front wall, you know? I mean, the whole, everything has to be, the siding will have to be replaced. Just, I just don't, I don't know what we're asking them to save.
Okay. So let's, let's go to that architectural, the engineer. What did he say about the roof?
That it needs to be, needs to be replaced. The joists, the rafters, ceiling joists, you know, they weren't, they're not even current sizing that they need to be to start with, but, and they were fire damaged. So, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, the whole, the whole roof has to go. You know, new doors, windows, everything on the outside. I mean, even the siding will have to be replaced. I just don't, I don't know what we're asking him to save.
So Caitlin, I just want to just be really clear, is that when you're saying that, you are backing that up with the engineering report?
Yes, I mean, I'm looking at the, you know, you know, it was brought up that there wasn't an engineer report, but, but, I mean, I'm looking at one and
And that engineer report was from the applicant?
True. Yes. I mean, so, you know, but, I mean, you know, there's, there's pictures. And then from what Pierre Howell said, Pierre Howell is a longtime, very respected veteran of the Metro Codes Department that, you know, I've worked with a lot. And, and I just, you know, from what even he says, I can't find it, I have about 200 pages here of stuff. But his, he had a little bullet point section, you know, smoke and soot, layer of the shingle, I mean, you know, it's in the subfloor, it's in the floors, and all the wall cavities, smoke, I'm talking about, you know, and, I mean, it was just the thought of it not having just extreme water damage. I mean, I watched the video footage of them just dousing the whole house with water from a ladder truck. So that's something, that goes, that goes everywhere. So, you know, the tongue and groove, that, that whole front porch, the top section's got to go. So, here's Pierre Howell. You know, only, even he, you know, only a tiny section of roofing is salvageable, so therefore a full replacement is recommended. I don't know. So I just, that, that's the thing, you know, the numbers, just the fact of what, what can even be saved, I guess, is, just according to the engineer's report, with the things that the engineer has recommended that have to go, you know, what, what's left? And so in that case, you know, having guesstimates for replacement doesn't really speak as strongly to me, just because I don't, you know, I feel like everything's, everything interesting about the house, everything historically characteristic about the house, has to be replaced anyways.
Make a motion? Are we ready to make a motion? Commissioners, Elizabeth, do you have anything to say? Sorry. Mr. Brown?
Robin, can you say more about the incomplete information piece?
Sure. Again, we were just concerned that you've got two very, very different estimates. And again, one of the contractors stated that he couldn't really put together a true estimate because he did not have a complete engineer report, never meant to say there was no engineer report. There is one. But we were saying it's not very complete enough for someone to put together a true estimate. So that's just where we got, there's a lot of numbers in the estimates that aren't usually used in economic hardship, things that were damaged that have nothing to do with the fire, high-end finishes were noted. All of this is supposed to just be the basics that are needed to get the building up to code. So that was just our concern, that it's still a little incomplete. But again, that's staff's concern. You have a lot more information here through public comment.
Did, did, when you say that they could not get any good
Thank you. An estimate for the, because of an incomplete, did they say what they, what the deficiency was in the report?
It just doesn't provide complete information. They would need to have a clear understanding of exactly what needs to be replaced, what is structurally sound and what is not structurally sound. And the report just kind of deals with it in generalities that we have right now.
I mean, I, I'm really toying with the, it's very, very delicate. But we've just, we've got to remember that we are, what we are accepting, sort of, everybody cringes when I say this, we're setting a precedent on not just the decision that we're making, but what kind of information is submitted and what we accept to base our decisions on. So I'm, that's what, that's sort of where I'm, I'm sort of interacting with. Not, not that we want this house, we want him staying in the neighborhood. I live in East Nashville, love it. But it, we, we, this is our charge, and we need to make sure that we've been very, very clear in our decision.
So staff, in prior hardship applications, have we accepted just one? Or our, our guideline is to have two engineers, engineer reports? I mean, I think that's kind of what Commissioner Ann is saying, is that if we are to say we would like more information, what is specifically that we would want?
Well, I think, I think they're saying that they need
Not enough information.
I understood what you said, I just can't repeat.
Each, each case is unique. Some we've required more, some we've required less. And again, the staff report just, we felt like, especially after bringing in both experts, and they said a little bit different things. And having seen fire damage repair that went through this commission before, we just felt like that we needed more information to make a definitive decision. And, you know, fire damage, my house has fire damage, I live close by, you know, and I have charred beams still in my attic. That was pretty typical because of coal fires and chimney fires. But that damage, you can use charred members to repair it, you have to sister on to them. So we just want to make sure we looked at it completely before we approved its demolition. There are just still some unanswered questions. It may meet it with a little bit more information. We may say, absolutely, we just didn't feel like we had quite enough at this point. No one had actually gotten up and done a depth test on, to see how much damage there was to the members. So no one with a ladder ever go up and check that out. The damage from the smoke and the fire was very centralized along the ridge. It didn't go down very far beyond that because the fire department had cut two holes in the chimney, I guess, early on. And truly, we didn't see any water damage. We went on a rainy day, it was dry as a bone, just because I think it was just so centralized. Again, the smoke and soot are something we don't typically deal with a lot. That's why we brought on the expert, Lisa George, because of her more recent work at another locally landmarked project that you guys reviewed, where they're originally wanting to demolish the fire hall. And so that's how we got here. I'm not sure if that fully answers your question.
Well, it, when, when we ask, I mean, I guess it was already on our agenda. Had that question been asked and, and there just wasn't enough time to get the additional information?
Well, you know, we had suggested more information, and I, I think with the time crunch and, you know, they have to want to pay someone else to get us the additional information. We certainly don't have a budget to pay, or I wish we did, to pay our own structural engineer to go in and help assist the commission with these issues when they arise, but we don't. So that would have to been provided by the applicant.
Okay. We are, sounds like, ready to make a motion. Commissioner Ann? Okay, we're going with it.
Can let me see one.
Yeah.
I'll just, I mean, I, I would like to say that, I mean, I believe the reason that there is a commission, you know, obviously to go with the guidelines, the neighborhood, the neighborhood asks for these guidelines, we have to go with the guidelines. You know, staff does a terrific job of being stickler, you know, to the guidelines, and I think that, that's why there is a commission that's appointed by, we volunteer citizens to take it on a case-by-case basis, you know, and inject a little, you know, yes, obviously take the guidelines very strictly, but, you know, at some point, just kind of bring a little real-world flavor into our commission meetings. Otherwise, you know, it just, everything would be super cut and dry, easily done, everything by staff. So that's just one thing that I'd like to share.
And just to be clear, in this case, we aren't reviewing the guidelines, but we're reviewing Metro Code. There, there is a section that deals with economic hardship.
And, and Kwan, again, the economic hardship is this plus this equals this. It is a math question as well.
Correct.
Well, that they're specific, you know, if it's cost in construction and that it outweighs the value of it to be resold.
We're also, I, I said, there are questions there. And, you know, how are we weighing those things that are unclear? I mean, we, we have what we have to evaluate, and that's been done.
I would like to make a motion. All right?
I would like to make a motion that based on the information that we have received today, that we allow the applicant full demolition of the property and the ability to rebuild according to guidelines set forth by this commission.
Which, can I add that that would come back to this commission for approval?
Yes, it would come back to this commission for approval.
Second.
The motion passes. Oh, yes.
There needs to, yeah.
Let me say that again. Yes. All those, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? So we have one opposed and three, four. Okay. So that means the, it passes for?
It takes four.
Hang on a second.
It's four.
It takes four to?
So that means the chair will vote?
I will go with staff approval. I vote for staff approval.
You vote for staff, okay, so there's two. Okay.
So then, I'm sorry, you were saying that you vote against the motion?
I vote against the motion.
Right. So we still don't have four concurring votes, so the motion fails. So now we can move on, or there can be a second motion.
Do we take another vote? Is that, is that what we do, legal?
You can, or?
Clarify?
If there's not enough votes to pass whatever motion was on the floor, then you can make an alternative motion if that first motion failed. And it looks like by the count that it did fail.
Would I have to make the alternative motion? Or would you like to make one?
Can you all give us just a minute? We want to find the rule on this, okay?
I can, if, if, if we were to --
One, just one second.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. What it says in the Rules of Order Procedures, Section 3 is Members, Officers and Duties, Letter D, manner of voting. The voting on all questions coming before the commission shall be entered into the minutes reflected in the eyes and nose unless it is unanimous. At least five members of the commission shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of its business. The concurring vote of four members of the commission shall constitute final action of the commission on any matter before it. The chair shall vote in the case of a tie, or if the reg, requisite four concurrent votes have not been met.
Since the previous motion failed, you are free to continue discussion. And perhaps someone will wish to make a motion, or change their vote, or something that will allow us to get four concurrent votes on some action.
Should we, if we were to propose a motion asking for additional information, I mean, as one of the conditions, would that be appropriate?
I don't think in this case, because usually your decisions are for approval, and then you have certain conditions. This is sort of a more a little black and white. It's either demoed, or it's either approved for demo, or it's not approved for demo. If you want to ask the applicant to defer, you are welcome to do that. I don't believe they want to. But I mean, that's up to them to say.
Well, I mean, certainly, I mean, time has gone by, and I'd certainly appreciate that.
What would you like to see further?
I think.
What would you like to see further, was my question.
I think that you and I have the, our caution is because we, the more information, I mean, there's plenty of information, but other than why would, for me as well, is that you've got these professionals who have said this, and there's not quite enough information. So if, that's pretty much a, you know, where, if we are, we need to be specific on what we want. Legal, are you giving us further?
And I don't know exactly, I mean, I know the facts that we've been given, and the comparison that staff has come forth, and we know that they deal with this on a day-to-day basis. And that, that type of evaluation, I mean, I trust, because I don't have that much expertise, other than the experience that I have sitting on this commission. It's just, it's just really tough. I hate it that it comes down to that. But I also know that we've developed these guidelines, and that we have, if we don't abide by them, I mean, we don't, our charge doesn't mean anything sitting here. But I just, I want, I wish I could work something out and make it, make it right. And that's sort of where I sit.
I think as Commissioner Jones even stated, there's not going to be much left to the property after they have to replace or repair everything that the engineer said that they would have to. So I'm not, I would just like to know what your reasoning is for wanting to either defer or deny.
Well. Because they can replace it.
Having, having, having also gone through a fire, and it was, I don't know that it was, it was, I can't remember the percentage, but it was high. The whole building is gutted. I mean, I've had to, we were going to have to replace the roof, everything on the inside, probably 60% of the windows. Well, no, probably 40% of the windows. So, I mean, having that experience, I just know that, that things can be salvaged. And because of our guidelines, I'm committed to go by those. And I think it's, I mean, but some of the pictures, I understand what Commissioner Jones is saying, but I also know, I mean, we had two fires. And I think y'all said that the fire department was out there several times. I mean, those do rekindle. And we had that same thing happen. Some of more of it was destroyed. And insurance doesn't cover all of that. So I just, I know, having had that experience, and know the things that we're going to have to salvage, that, and seeing some of the pictures, I mean, the inside of the house is not nearly as damaged as what we had. And, you know, our house is gutted, gone, floor's gone, everything. But, so that's sort of what I'm basing it on, but it's not, they're not figures, other than what has been stated in the comparison.
And I also will say that because of gone through managing several properties that have been under fire with water damage and heavy soot, that there was, they were rehabable. And so, you know, there wasn't a complete demolition of those. I don't think it was as severe as what you're saying. But again, you know, having this charge, that if it's, there is a possibility of doing that, which I've seen that in several, you know, situations that I've been involved in, that there is a possibility.
And some of the things that have been stated about, if they were to rebuild, they would have to, they could not reuse the existing foundation. I mean, if we had those facts, that yes, the foundation had, was not usable, and those kinds of facts, I think, I'd feel, I'd feel better about that decision.
One question you guys could ask is, if the, I know it's been stated, but you could ask the applicant directly, is he willing to defer? If he's not, then you can further your deliberations.
Okay.
Yes, but we do need to give direction on what, I guess, that we need, we're asking for. I don't, I don't want to send anybody away not knowing what we've, what we expect. That makes, I'm looking for Rob, to Rob and Tim to say, yes, that's the direction that we need to take. If, in fact, we were asking the applicant to do that.
What might be useful is on your staff recommendation, right after the recommendation for disapproval, is a list of what could be included. So again, maybe you could use that as your information about the additional information you would like to have if they agree to deferral.
Are you saying, developing the questions afterwards?
No, an engineer's report that is conducted after cleaning of the structure and provides information needed by an estimator, an estimator for rehab, an estimate for rehab based on a new engineer's report and a thorough analysis of the property, and calculated by contractor with a demonstrated expertise in historic rehab. Those things are going to cost the applicant, that they're going to have to be paid for. So my guess is, and based on what I'm hearing, they don't want to defer. But that could be your ask.
Oh, okay, okay. So there is some direction.
Well, I think because you and I said, you know, we did not approve the motion, but we are approving staff recommendation, that is one of the staff recommendations. So that's pretty clear, right?
It's not actually the recommendation, the recommendation is for disapproval.
You suggested, it's a suggested.
Based on the information we have. And then we provided some additional information, because we thought, you know, we might get to this point. And just for everyone's knowledge, this is kind of what we saw as missing. It may not be what you see.
So just to Commissioner Bell's, you know, last point, I mean, I, yes, I believe anything is possible. I mean, yes, it can be done. Just, you know, the fact of the matter is, will it, will the numbers add up to, you know, I don't want to use the word profitable, but profitable. I mean, something that isn't causing the homeowner to go underwater on this property, on this home. And I just, you know, yes, it's possible, but, you know, just going through the staff notes on, you know, the line items, you know, the cut half, you know, the shingle replacement acknowledging that more than half the existing roof is repairable, I don't think that's true. So go back to the original number, that's $3,500 more dollars. The soffit fascia gutter and painting, same situation. You know, security system, there was an argument for that. I couldn't care less about that, $600. Support posts, you know, insulation in the basement, no evidence that there was insulation in the basement. I do think the applicant showed that there was his evidence of insulation in the basement. And you can't not have insulation in the basement, you can't have an unconditioned space without insulation, without, that doesn't meet code. So you have to have either conditioned space in a basement or insulation to be code-worthy. Roof framing, you know, that was cut significantly, acknowledging that half the structure is repairable. See, you know, I noted, see engineer's report, I don't believe that it is. Same with, you know, upgrading roof and upgrading the floor joists, the roof framing, not required to meet code. I mean, the entire thing has to be gutted. So, you know, so just with those numbers added back in, the delta was already very low. You know, so that, to me, is causing the homeowner to go underwater on this property. Yes, it can be done. Is it feasible without causing undue cost, without potential for profit on the homeowner? I do not believe so.
If the board is inclined to hear further guidance from legal, and I do want to say for the record, I have been watching on Channel 3. I'm Susan Jones from Metro Legal, and I have been keeping up with this case. So at any rate, we have an attorney, we are double booked tonight. We have the beer board meeting at the same time, well, it's about to start meeting, and this board is still continuing to meet. So we have to relieve each other. So that's why I've come in at this point to advise the board. I wanted to remind the board, we just reminded the board of the rule that said that it requires four concurring votes of the commission to constitute a final action of the board. That is from the rules what we read earlier, Section 2D. But also, it's a part of the Metro Code, 1740410, I'm sorry, 1740400. And it also says that there are four concurring votes that are required for the commission to have final action. So any motion that does not have four votes is a non-action, essentially, of the board. And that's historically how we've treated it in every other case. Okay? So if neither motion passes, and it is a non-action of the board, then this provision would kick in, and that is 1740420. And it says, failure of the commission to act within 30 days after receipt of a sufficient application deemed, is deemed an approval, except when there's mutual agreement to extend the time limit. So it will, this application will be approved by operation of law if you fail to act tonight.
Approved according to staff recommendation, or approved for what they've applied?
Approved for what they've applied for.
So if the vote that we have on record right now stands, it is a non-action?
That's correct.
I don't know if that I've ever seen. So I don't remember that. I haven't, I'm reading over our, again, our charge for the determination of economic hardship. So that's what I'm doing here. asked it, but I know that sometimes the estimates would, are replacing it, not necessarily in kind, but sort of upgrading. Is that one of the conditions that we have here?
We think probable.
Okay. I mean, remembering, you know, ran it versus slamming it kind of thing. Okay. All right. I know, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, I understand that. So.
You have a choice. You can entertain another motion, you can continue deliberations, or you can, if no one wants to make that motion, then that, the motion that failed will be how we end. And if there's no other motion within the next 30 days, it'll be approved by operation of law.
Does that mean the next 30 days, like right now, or 30 days from now?
From the date, is it from the submittal?
Submittal of the, okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
30 days from the submittal of the application. Okay, thank you. So from the application, the submittal of the application, which would be?
And we've had this for a couple of months, because they elected to defer last month. So I think the easiest thing is to assume, because you're not meeting until December, that if there's no action taken, which is fine, it's happened before, then it will be approved as requested.
So the applicant understands that?
Please explain approach. Just if, if there's no action taken, then in 30 days, it would be approved, if that is what you're saying. If the vote remains as it stands, it would be approved in 30 days.
You wouldn't need another 30 days, it would just be approved. We'd issue the permit tomorrow or Friday.
Okay. We'll accept the permit tomorrow.
I mean, for clarification, do we need to just repeat the motion and revote if anybody decides to change their mind?
Certainly, the board is able to make a new motion, if.
But it can't be the same motion.
But it can't be the same motion. But you can make a new motion if you want it to, and see what that one, how that one fares.
Okay. Are you good?
No, but yeah.
It's the way it stands.
So the motion stands, that's all we're going to say. The motion stands. Thank you, everybody. Okay, where are we now?
Would it be appropriate to take a break right now to let everybody?
Yeah, let's, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you, audience, for your patience. You ready? Robin, are you ready? Okay. We are back in session. So we are on to So we are on to 1707 Holly Street.
This is an application to build a new detached accessory dwelling unit at the rear of the lot. The location, materials, and roof form all meet the design guidelines. The footprint is proposed at 689 square feet, which meets the guidelines. The proposed ridge height, however, is 21 feet from grade, which is taller than the ridge height of the residence measured from finished floor, which is 18 feet from floor to ridge. To meet the design guidelines, the height should not exceed 18 feet. The application includes an uncovered balcony that is 11 by 5 for 55 square feet. In June, staff presented an application for 933 Fatherland Street, which included a similar uncovered balcony. At that time, staff recommended that upper-level balconies on outbuildings and daddoo's be permitted and not be included in the overall footprint allotment, provided that they meet certain criteria, that they, that those balconies are located facing the house or the rear of the lot, not on the sides, that the outer railing meets setback requirements, that the footprint of them would be limited to 30 square feet, that they're uncovered and that they don't have posts. Accordingly, staff recommends that the proposed balcony here meet those criteria that were proposed this summer. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed detached accessory dwelling unit with the conditions that the ridge height is reduced to 18 feet while maintaining the same roof pitch as proposed, as it matches the primary dwelling, that staff have approval of materials, roofing, windows, and doors, that the balcony is reduced in size to 30 square feet, new drawings submitted with these conditions, and as usual, that the restrictive covenant is filed and received prior to issuing the permit for it. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here for your questions.
Okay. Any questions for Paul at the moment? Okay, thank you. The applicant, please come forward. Set your name and address.
My name is Tyler Love Day with Van Pond Architect at 2929 Sidco Drive, Nashville. Our clients Andrew and Carly Rip purchased 1707 Holly Street in Lachlan Springs on September 27th, 2013. We developed designs for a daddoo for working with them. They are continuing to work with us on a master plan for a renovation in addition to their home, but wanted to put the design for their detached accessory dwelling unit and garage ahead of that as they plan to construct this project first in order to live there during the construction of the renovation and addition. We designed this project with careful consideration of the site features and the scale of the existing residence. We analyzed the average heights of the existing eaves, the overall, overall height of the house, and the slope of the site to arrive at a design proposal that responds sensitively to all of those relationships. I've sent the staff a photograph of the house from the front and the rear, which is what we're looking at now. That's the rear. The photos show that the site slopes significantly from the front to rear, and we have proposed an eve height that is equal to that of the average eve height of the existing structure, combined with a roof pitch that matches it, resulting in a total height from grade of 14 foot, one and a half inches. Staff has recommended to you that a maximum ridge height of 18 feet be allowed. We disagree with this because the recommendation of the change in grade, well, the change in grade from highest at the front of the house to the lowest at the rear of the lot. This change in grade places the floor level of the proposed structure eight foot, two inches lower than that of the existing house, and should allow for a slightly taller structure to remain in scale with the existing house. We are at a height that is in keeping with overall scale of the house when the slope of the site is taking into, taken into consideration in order for the proposed structure to remain subservient to the massing of the house. The ridge height of the proposed structure at a maximum height is 21 foot, 10 inches, and the average ridge height of the house is 21 foot, 9 inches. The ridge height of the proposed structure is also four feet lower than that of the main house because of the change in grade, as you can see on sheet A4. If I can, oh, it looks like, no. It's not there. We feel that the final proposed design effectively responds in being differential to the existing structure, and in doing so, allows it to meet the design intents of the overlay guidelines. Additionally, staff has asked that the balcony be reduced in size and relocated based upon the recommendations made to this commission in June of this year. We certainly appreciate that there is concern from staff, and they make the recommendations, but they cite a recommendation that is not incorporated into the guidelines as of yet. We are happy to reduce the size of the proposed balcony to 30 square feet, but relocating it based on an unpublished recommendation in the overlay guideline is not an equitable solution, because no one can design to a standard that's not yet published. We ask for your consideration and approval of the final submitted design. If you have any advice or thoughts, we are more than glad to hear them. I'm so happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak on behalf? State name and address, please.
My name is Andrew Rip. I'm the owner of 1707 Holly Street, and I just want to say thanks for hearing us out today. We totally appreciate the historic overlay and want to abide by your rules. As my friend Tyler stated, the grading of our backyard goes down pretty substantially. So the height of our house, even at our proposed height, would be, what was it, four feet lower than the house? So it doesn't look like a two-story from the front, just from the back. Thank you.
Thank you and your patience for waiting this long. Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion board.
Was the grade change, was that, was the grade change taken into account, and you just still felt that the structure was too tall? And then secondary, was the balcony unpublished comments? I don't know anything about balconies.
The balcony was proposed as a test case in June. The outbuilding that that was relating to has not yet been built. So that hasn't been, it hasn't, it hasn't come back to you to see what, what the commission thinks of it. As far as the grade, the, the residents and the outbuilding are, are measured kind of independently of, of grade, if I'm not mistaken. So you won't be, an applicant won't be punished if the, if you're on a hillside going to the rear, you know, making you have a 10-foot-tall outbuilding. And likewise, you don't necessarily gain that. You're required to be subordinate to the primary dwelling in any case.
So with the balcony, I don't remember the case in June. Was it, what was the, sorry, what's the recommendation here that you move it where? Balcony reduced in size. Okay, so is that just kind of what we came to in June, that it, that that was, what was deemed appropriate and, right?
I'll say in the past, you haven't allowed for balconies at all, upper-level balconies at all. So this was a concession to allow for them. So, but we do want to treat everyone the same, and so want to follow the same guidelines. And that's our concern about outbuildings always, just to, some of you are new and don't, weren't here for these discussions. But back in 2012, I think it was, the commission looked at, because you have guidelines in the ordinance for detached accessory dwelling units, design elements, and you have design guidelines in your design guidelines. And they were, could be looked at a little differently. And the neighborhood said, we'd like to be, them to be treated the same. So you said, yes, we agree, they should be treated the same. It doesn't really matter if there's people living in there, if there's a car in there, that design-wise, they should be treated the same. So, but then there were some decisions made that didn't exactly meet the guidelines and those ordinance requirements, and it's become an issue. It's meant that there's been some arbitrary decisions made. It means that staff doesn't really quite, didn't quite know how to guide applicants, and it has meant that people have built outbuildings, gotten some sort of concession, then come back and want a detached accessory dwelling unit and don't meet the standards of the ordinance. So, and I can't remember how long ago it was, but the commission made that commitment to treat the two the same and to stay consistent.
Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed? 1515 Beechwood Avenue.
This is an application also for a daddoo in this existing outbuilding, which was approved and built along with the primary residence in 2012. There's the existing building. At that time, 2012, 2011, daddoo's were first reviewed. They were required to be no more than 25 feet tall with dormers covering no more than 50% of the roof. However, this one was not presented and approved as a daddoo. It was a garage and studio with no dwelling space proposed. So the 28-feet height and full-width dormer were approved in this case as they were subordinate to the house. So although the outbuilding's overall height is less than that of the house, staff finds that the ridge height of 28 feet and eve height of 15 feet, 6 inches exceed what is permitted by the design guidelines and code. That the height shall not exceed the height of the principal structure as measured to the eve line with a maximum height of 17 feet for two-story detached accessory dwellings, 10 feet for one stories. The eve height itself does not exceed the maximum, but it is taller than the eve height of the residence, which averages 11.75 feet. The dormer, the design guidelines, and the section of code also state that dormers shall be subordinate to the roof slope by covering no more than 50% of the roof. This wall dormer takes up the entire width of the building on this side, the alley side that you see on the upper right. The only exterior change proposed to the outbuilding is a, a new door on the east side. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the detached accessory dwelling unit, finding that the height, eve height, and roof will not meet the design guidelines or code for those criteria. There is public comment that you should have received on this one from neighbors, and the applicant is still here. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Paul. The applicant is here.
Hi, Manuel Zeitlin, 516 Hagen Street. What's my office address? So I'm representing Jennifer and Jason Martin, who bought this house after it was built. The plans that were approved showed a studio above the garage with a half-bath in it. They would like to, you know, convert it to be able to use it as an apartment. Their parents come for long periods of time and stay upstairs by their master bedroom. And we look at it, we had, we asked Councilmember Berkeley Allen to come out to the site, and she met with us, and basically said that she felt like it was pretty minor and that she wouldn't oppose this. I asked the, I asked my clients to meet with their neighbors and show them, you know, what they were planning to do, which is basically no changes to this. And I think you have two letters in there from support, of support from an adjacent neighbor and neighbor across the alley behind it. So the, I think the maximum height in the guidelines of the eve for the ridge was 27 feet. The existing ridge is 28 and a half feet, so it's a foot and a half higher. The eve, I think the maximum height for eve on a two-story daddoo is 17 feet. This is 15 and a half feet, although it's lower than 17 feet, but it's higher than the eve on the front house. My clients would be willing to reduce the dormer on the back of the alley to half, to be half, no greater than half the size of the back of the house. And that's, that seems to be the part that's, you know, in terms of the scale of the building, that's a little bit imposing on, on the alley, and that would help mitigate it. So, you know, we're asking for some minor modifications for this and enable them to use it, and they're certainly willing to do what, you know, they reasonably can. They obviously can't lower the ridge or change the eve height, but they could, could reduce the dormer size. Thanks.
Thank you. Open public hearing. Anyone wants to speak on this project? Closed public hearing. Discussion or a motion.
I guess my reservation, just because outbuildings are, my reservation is calling this, accepting this as a daddoo, that's, again, I'm using the words, that's a precedent that, that other neighbors could say, well, you know, this is one, we don't, we don't have any authority over the use of that, but I'm concerned about calling it a daddoo. I mean, and, and one of the other things is that we've seen so many garages built knowing that this is exactly what's going to end up. Just I have a reservation that calling it a daddoo and accepting it as a daddoo is a concern.
Well, for the, the main issue, I'm trying, I'm trying to go through the plans real quick. It was the height that's too, too much? By how much? And then, oh, and then, yeah, and then the dormer. So I'm just saying, you know, if the height's not really that bad, like, if they, could we, you know, if they did reduce the dormer to something that staff deems appropriate, you know, is there something, or, so the 50%?
I think they're only going to reduce the dormer on the, on the alley side, right?
This, this just gets back into what we just were talking about. If one person's allowed, then what do we say to the next person?
Yeah, I'm saying, if they reduce it to 50%, are they in the, are they in the daddoo guidelines?
The ridge and eve height are too tall.
Okay.
So then what do we say to the applicant just before this?
Yeah.
To the next applicant? That's our struggle. I mean, it's a perfectly reasonable request, but if, in order to stay consistent with your decision-making, we made the recommendation for disapproval.
Any other comments or make a motion?
Make a motion to adapt staff recommendation.
Second. All opposed? All in favor? All in favor? It's been a long day. All in favor? None, any opposed? None opposed? Then the motion carries for 1515 Beechwood. 1400 Ordway Place.
1400 Ordway Place is an application for new infill with a side setback determination. The site at 1400 Ordway Place is vacant, except for an existing outbuilding. You can kind of see it the way back of the photo on the right. The site locate, is located at the southwest corner of North 14th Street and Ordway Place. Until recently, the lot was part of a double lot at 1402 Ordway Place. In February 2017, the applicant applied to the Historic Zoning Commission to construct infill on the vacant portion of the lot, and in doing so, they would be re-establishing an old lot line. Slightly complicated, but at the time, the existing house at 1402 actually sits on the re-established property line. So at that time, the commission determined that it was appropriate and met the design guidelines for the existing house to sit on the re-established lot line. So also in February 2017, MHCC approved with conditions an infill that was one and a half stories in height. The applicant has not started construction on that infill. The applicant is now proposing a two-story infill instead of a one-and-a-half-story infill. Staff finds that while the overall height of the house at 28 feet, 2 inches from grade could be appropriate, the proposed two-story form does not meet the immediate historic context. So I'm going to start by just kind of showing some photos of the immediate context. On the upper right is a photo of the house at 1402 Ordway, so it's a house immediately adjacent to the site in question, and then to the And then to the right is the house on the other side of that. And on the bottom, they're just, it's a streetscape kind of on the south side of Ordway and the same side of Ordway. The house at the top is directly across the street from the site in question, and then on the bottom, you can see how the house is going further down on Ordway Place. Across the street, on this side of the, on the 1400 block of Ordway, it's pretty much, not entirely, but predominantly 1 to 1 and 1/2 stories in height. Across the street, immediately across the street, across North 14th Street, is the, what's now the Nashville Classical Charter School. And then catty corner from the site is a two-story house. There are actually two two-story historic houses at 1309 and 1311 Ordway. So, again, this is kind of across North 14th Street catty corner. Staff finds that even though there are two, two-story houses on the 12 and 1300 block of Ordway, a two-story house on this 1400 block is not appropriate. Because North 14th Street is a wide major street, those two-story houses that are located at Ordway Place on the other side of North 14th Street have less of an impact on the immediate historic context than the closer 1 and 1/2 story houses. Also, the two-story houses on the other side of North 14th Street are on much lighter lots, on 75-feet-wide lots, where this lot is just 50-foot wide. And that helps to kind of keep their scale appropriate to be on those larger lots. Staff finds that the immediate context is 1 and 1/2 stories, and therefore, a two-story house is not appropriate. So, going back, here's the front facade. Staff does have other concerns about the infill, which I will go into detail about, but I just want to reiterate that the primary concern is that it's a two-story form. So, even if they do things like added mullions and change window openings, in staff's opinion, that would not meet the design guidelines, the fact that it's a two-story house is not appropriate. As previously stated, the proposed height is approximately 28 feet 2 inches tall from grade, while staff finds that the overall ridge height meets the historic context, the two-story form and the 21-foot 9-inch-tall eve height does not meet the historic context. The eve height is too tall. The width of the house is approximately 34 feet at the front, with a maximum width of 37 feet 8 inches. While this width might be appropriate for a 1 and 1/2 story house, staff finds that it is not appropriate for a two-story structure. Two-story structures are typically narrow, particularly where there are 50-foot wide lots like this one. So, the nearest two-story house on a 50-foot wide lot is down the street at 1420 Ordway, and its width is significantly narrow at just 31 feet. So, staff finds the proposed width to be inappropriate for a two-story house on a lot of this size. Here is the site plan, showing the width of the house in relationship to the site and the house next door. You kind of, another issue with the width is that the, because the lot, the house at 1402 Ordway Place sits on the side property line, there is an accent easement to allow the owners of 1402 Ordway to use part of the lot of 1400 Ordway. You can kind of see that easement is hatched on the site plan. Because of this accent easement and the placement of the house at 1402 Ordway, the billable space on a lot of 1400 Ordway is reduced. The applicant is proposing to situate the new infill just 6 feet from the wall of 1402 Ordway Place. Meanwhile, the average distance between homes on the south side of the block is about 12 feet. So, because of the close proximity of the new building to the existing house of 1402 Ordway, staff finds that the width of the two-story massing to be inappropriate. The applicant is also asking to, to reduce the side setback along North 14th Street. The applicant is proposing to situate the house approximately 6 feet from the 14th Street side property line. Base zoning requires that houses on corner lots like this one be a minimum of 10 feet from the side property line. So, again, base zoning requires 10 feet because it's a corner lot, they are asking for 6 feet. In February, MHCC approved a side setback of 6 feet 6 inches for a 1 and 1/2 story house. In doing so, staff analyzed the side setbacks of other 1 and 1/2 story houses in the immediate vicinity, and we found that there were some 1 and 1/2 story houses that didn't meet that 10-foot setback and had about a 6-foot 6-inch setback. So, at that time, staff and the commission found the side setback to be appropriate. But however, in this case, since this is a new two-story house, staff thought it would be most appropriate to compare the side setbacks of nearby two-story houses, to kind of compare apples to apples. So, in doing that, the house catty corner at 1311 Ordway, which is the photo in the middle, it has a side setback from 14th Street of about 13 feet. The other nearest two-story residential house at 1312 Stratton, which is about two blocks to the north, it has a side setback for its bay, so the nearest portion to the, to the 14th Street, at about 11 feet. So, because of that, because there isn't, there doesn't seem to be a historic context for two-story houses not meeting the 10-foot setback, staff finds that the, the setback determination for the side is not appropriate and does not meet the design guidelines. Staff also has concerns about the front setback, as the wall of the, the front wall of the house is significantly forward of the front wall of the adjacent house. And again, because the house is two stories and wide on a 50-foot wide lot, the, you know, being set so much forward would just add to the inappropriate height and scale of the, of the, of the proposed infill. So, again, here is the front elevation. Staff has concerns about the roof form. Typically, the design guideline states that roof forms should have, roof slope should be a minimum of 612, and this is just 412. And on the side elevation, staff has concerns about some of the window openings either being in an inappropriate location or not having enough windows, particularly on North 14th Street, where the facade will be highly visible. But again, things like windows are secondary to our overall concern, which is the fact that it's a two-story house. So, in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the project, finding that the proposed infill does not meet sections 2B1 for height, 2B2 for scale, 2B3 for setback and rhythm of spacing, 2B5 for roof, and 2B7 for proportion and rhythm of openings. And, yeah, so, we're recommending disapproval. The applicant is here, and I believe I passed around to you some public comment that we received, so that's in front of you as well.
Thank you, Melissa.
Just to say that it was Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association that sent us comment on the project.
And I think, I think that the representative is here.
Sure.
And will want to address the commissioners as well.
Oh, okay. Great. Applicant?
Hello. I'm William Smallman, 1512 Paris Avenue, and I'm the applicant. Thank you for your time. And it's been a long day, I know. And I appreciate staff's input on this, although I do disagree with some of it, and I'd like to go over those items, I guess, one by one. So, first is height. Staff has, I'm going to read some of this because it's long. Staff finds that a two-story form does not meet the immediate historic context, where there are several two-story houses on the 12 and 1300 block of Ordway. The 1400 block of Ordway, where the site is located, is predominantly 1 and 1 and 1/2 stories in height. The house next door and those across Ordway Place are 1 and 1/2 stories in height. So, it's speaking very specifically to the properties that are touching this one. The guidelines state that new buildings must be consistent, or must be constructed to the same number of stories and to a height which is compatible with the adjacent, with the height of adjacent buildings, which sounds adjacent, you would think, is touching. But in the definitions of adjacent on the same guidelines, it says, the Lachlan Springs guidelines, they include a definition on page 28 of the guidelines, saying that adjacent is defined as surrounding or in close proximity. So, it's not, it's a different definition than one would think. This means that staff should not only look at the immediate neighbors, but also at homes in the surrounding or close proximity to get context, which I believe should include other homes on the block of Ordway, just like the staff and commission did in the approval of the home at 1411 Ordway, which was the most recently approved new construction home on this block of Ordway. I'll come back to that house in a minute. Yeah, these are staff reports I'd like to pass around from 1411 Ordway, from when it was approved. And I'd also like to point out that the commission has often approved two-story homes next to 1 and 1/2 story homes in the past, in this overlay and other overlays as well, other districts. I've provided seven examples, which are found in just a few minutes of searching, showing where the immediate context is not just the homes right next door or across the street. None of the seven homes that are coming around have two-story homes next door, and they were all approved at two stories. And then coming back to 1411 Ordway, which was approved by staff and the commission, the height and scale of 1411 Ordway, this is from the staff report discussing height and scale of that property which was approved. The new house will be two stories tall, actually, 1411 Ordway is five doors down, just to put it in context. The new house will be two stories tall with a ridge height of 20, 29 feet, yeah, 29 feet 6 inches. And then staff's summary on this, or the recommendation was, staff found these proportions are compatible with those of the surrounding historic houses comprising mainly of 1 and, 1 and 1 and 1/2 story houses between 24 and 28 feet tall. One two-story house across the street and down four, which is 33 feet tall, staff finds this project to meet section 2B1 and 2, which is height and scale. So, four doors down from 1411 is the only other two-story house on the block, and staff used that one to say that there is context to approve 1411, which is a two-story house. 1411 is four doors down from me. So, I don't feel like I'm very out of context, it's already been set by example. Then on scale, staff states that the proposed plan is too wide for a two-story home. However, it would be appropriate if it was a 1 and 1/2 story home. I provided a list of 11 two-story homes in the surrounding context. I only included homes on 50-foot lots, so I did not include the ones that are catty corner, because they're on larger lots, which, so of those 11, eight of them are wider than the house I have proposed. So, to be in context, I am actually smaller than the average on width. And that is with mine at the full width, even though at the front edge, I'm smaller than that. And because of that, I feel like the width is consistent. Then staff points out, on the average space between the homes on the south side of Ordway is 12 feet, the majority of my proposed home is 8 feet off the east property line, with 6 feet at its closest point. The historic home to the east of my lot is encroaching into its setback at only, less than a foot off the property line. With my home being 6 feet off the property line, I've done the best I can by giving up an equal amount, if the average is 12, I've given up 6, to keep the rhythm of the street. And I understand that the average is 12, but they, their encroaching is the one reducing that, not my property. And I believe this plan is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood because of that, that my setback is equal to everybody else's, that the problem is not on my property. I would also like to point out the scale of surrounding homes in regards to overall finished square footage, so this is kind of regards to scale and mass. The proposed home that I have is 3,078 total square feet. My neighbor at 1402 is 500 square feet larger at 3,576 square feet. 1411 Ordway, which is the most recent new construction approved by staff on this block, is 600 square feet larger at 3,663. So, my proposed home is being called too large and out of scale compared to a house that is 20% larger that was approved by the staff and commission. Then setback, front setback. I've submitted a plan using the same front setback that was approved by the commission in February of this year, which was calculated by using the average of the four properties on the street per code. I've stuck to that, and I've actually, part of my front setback, you can see this brick wall to the, if you're looking at this, to the right of the windows, that is a planter, which technically should not be counted in building envelope. So, my home is about 1 and 1/2 feet further away from the pre-approved, the setback that was approved in February. If you don't count the planter, if you do count it, then I'm even. Then side setback. This plan proposes a 6-foot setback on the west side of the property, which is along 14th. February, in February, staff approved a 6-foot 6-side setback. The 6-foot setback is appropriate in context with adjacent homes along 14th. A good example of a two-story home in the surrounding context is a home at 1115 Forest Avenue, which is on the next street over, that is a north-south street, to keep it in context. It is a 42-foot-wide house, two stories, on a 50-foot lot. The side setback along 12th is 4 feet. So, I'm actually 2 feet larger than similar property in close proximity. 2 feet further setback. And then roof. So, the proportions and rhythm of openings and roof, I believe my roof pitch is visually compatible and does not contrast greatly with the surrounding context, which is what the guidelines ask for. Lachlan Springs Overlay guidelines state that roofs of new buildings shall be visually compatible by not contrasting greatly with roof shape and orientation of surrounding buildings. There's nothing that specifically states what it should be, just not contrasting greatly. And generally, two-story buildings have hiped roofs, which we do. And then finally, proportions and rhythm of openings. Staff has recommended adjusting a few windows to improve the rhythm of the openings. I believe staff is completely correct, and adjusting the windows, and I think it will be a better product in the end with that, and I would be happy to do all of those to adjust it. And again, thank you for your time. I will reserve what little bit I have left for comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smallman. Open public hearing? Anyone speaking for this project? However, yes, just open public comment.
So, my name is Elizabeth Smith. I represent the Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association. Specifically, I have a letter that our president, Honch Schmidt, submitted to you for consideration. I want to make sure that I clarify, as I read this letter, that it is from him, because it has some personal information in it that does not apply to my address at 1800 Russell Street, right? So, I'm reading his letter for him, because he was unable to be here today. On behalf of the Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Association, I'm writing in support of the Metro Historic Zoning Commission's staff recommendation to disapprove the application for construction of an infill house at 1400 Ordway Place. We emphatically agree with the recommendation's findings that the project does not meet sections of the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay design guidelines relating to height, scale, setbacks, rhythm of spacing, and proportion and rhythm of openings. Among these issues, we find the project's failure to conform to the guidelines related to height to be most concerning and provide sufficient basis alone to reject the project. Guideline number one provides new buildings must be constructed to the same number of stories and to a height which is compatible with the height of adjacent buildings. The recommendation notes that the 1400 block of Ordway Place is predominantly 1 and 1 and 1/2 stories in height. The recommendation finds that the houses immediately adjacent to the project are both 1 and 1/2 stories in height. Furthermore, we find that staff accurately noted that the two-story houses on the 1300 block do not provide the appropriate context because of important distinctions between 1200, 1300, 1400, and 1500 blocks. This is where it becomes personal to Mr. Schmidt. Because I live at 1424 Ordway Place, I can personally attest to the recommendation's finding on these points. For one, the street is much wider on the 1300 block of Ordway compared to the 1400 block. In fact, parking is only allowed on one side of, of Ordway, on the 1400 to 1500 block of Ordway because of the narrow width of the street. Thus, a large two-story house would be unlike any other house on that block of Ordway and not compatible with surrounding historic buildings. We support the recommendation's conclusion that the project does not conform to the height guideline and urge the commission to reject the project. Finally, we also draw your attention to the drawings submitted with the application. We note that address on the drawings is 4607 Idaho Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee, 37209, which is in the Sylvan Park neighborhood of Nashville. The drawings are dated July 9, 2015. We interpret this information to mean that the applicant has not made an effort to review and understand the guidelines and design of structure, which I would think that, yes, he has actually done that, since he has some, some very specific information. But the guidelines were specifically crafted with the historic context of Lachlan Springs and East End in mind. We urge the commission to reject any notion that what is suitable for one neighborhood is automatically suitable in another. For these reasons, we strongly support the recommendation and respectfully request that the commission reject this project. I did listen carefully to what the applicant had to say about the I did listen carefully to what the applicant had to say about the distinctions between the one and a half and the two stories that are in the adjacent area. And I think to say that because something was approved that does not fit the guidelines in one spot is not necessarily good defense for saying, okay, because they did it, we get it to do it too. Because as we talked about before, setting a precedent is a dangerous thing. We don't like setting a precedent that goes against the guidelines, and this particular property is going to be very difficult to fit into that corner where we have a big playground on one side, we have one and a half story house across the street, there is a larger one catty-corner from it, but it is not really the same. It's not, it is a historic structure that is not in the same style as this particular plan. So, Lockland Springs Neighborhood Association urges you to reject the project on the basis of the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We will close public hearing. Do, we can, yeah, later?
There was a minute left.
Yeah, a minute left, okay. Because we, all right, what if we have questions for him? Robin, what if we have questions for him? Will that take up his one minute? Okay, great.
Thank you for your input. I would like to just focus quickly on, please, there we go, the definition of adjacent. I completely understand if we go by the definition of adjacent, that if you're only looking at the properties that are touching it on each side, I may not be in context. But if you go by the definition of adjacent that is in the guidelines, I am in context. And I think that's the one we should focus on because it is one of the very few clearly defined words in the guidelines. I also would like to say I am not asking to use precedent with the house across the street, I'm just asking to rely on staff's guidance. So, I understand the house may have been bigger and it shouldn't have been, but staff's input was that it was appropriate. So, I'm not asking for precedent just to follow the exact same guidance that was given to mine or to the one across the street to be used at mine. They were two stories, they were taller than me, it was appropriate because of the context of the homes around the neighborhood in general. To now change that context is beyond precedent. I think that's changing the context when nothing has changed. Thank you.
Well, you're still there. When you resubmit these, will you please put the correct address on your plans?
I will.
Thank you, sir.
And that was not, most of the homes I try to build, I actually use a lot of the guidelines to work off of, so I hope it's not taken in a negative way. It's taking us somewhat of an honor that you guys do a good job, and it helps us to build them even if we're not in overlays, so I hope that's not taken as a negative.
Sure. We just want to make sure we're seeing the right project for the right applicant. Commissioners?
Chair, do you mind if I make a point of clarification before?
Yes, please.
Just about the front setback. The drawings that were submitted for the February design, which the commission approved, did include a similar front setback to what's being proposed now. But one of the conditions of approval in that case was that the front wall be pushed back to line up with the front wall of the house next door. So, the commission did not approve the front setback that was forward of the front setback to the house next door. Just want to make sure you understood that, if you guys discussed the front setback at all.
Clear, commissioners?
I mean, you know, you never know what you're going to get into at each of these meetings, you know, the definition of adjacent, something. But, I mean, I do understand, you know, the applicant and I appreciate your comments. But, I mean, each house has its own site, and each site has its own adjacency surrounding area, is what you want to call it. So, this one, I mean, in the immediate adjacency, I don't think it's appropriate. You know, how far you throw the rope could make it appropriate, you know, but, you know, again, and then, just because it has maybe happened before, you know, all the ones I've seen, you know, I wasn't a part of, they were older. The one, I think it's immediately across the street that he mentioned, I looked up on the old, you know, website, meeting minutes, and it reads more like a one and a half, that was approved, that he's brought up, that was a two-story house. It reads more like a one and a half story house as it's, just has a much different shape and a porch that wraps around. So, that's something. It reads much differently than this, than this front house. So, that's just one thing I would say. So, that's what I have to say about it.
I think that's very, very good as well, commissioners, that we also look at it when it's adjacent or in the vicinity of historic contributing buildings. So, that's also an important item that we look at.
Commissioners, I think I need to disclose that I received a message from the owner of 1411 Ordway Place, and they wanted me to point out that their lot is much larger than this one, and it also is more historically, it won a Historic Zoning Commission award. And so, I don't, I just thought I needed to disclose that.
Thank you, commissioner. It will not hinder you for making a neutral?
No.
Decision. Thank you.
I still, I still think, you know, that this house, when I look at it, it doesn't seem to have much of a historic look about it to fit in the neighborhood. I don't, I don't know, maybe, is, this is, this is, I just thought I'd...
Okay.
I think that's important in historic zoning.
Anybody else have anything?
Just regarding the application for 1400 Ordway Place, I move for approval based on, or I move to adopt staff recommendations for disapproval.
Motion, a second, all in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Passes per staff recommendation. Thank you. 1408 Paris Avenue.
All right. And before we begin, I just want to point out that there is some correspondence from the architect on your table regarding the calculation of the footprint, so you have that. So, the house located at 1408 Paris Avenue was built circa 1930 and does contribute to the character of the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood.
Melissa, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just, what did you say we were handed?
Oh, so on your desk, there is some correspondence that came in via my email from the architect, just to clarify the calculation of the footprint of the addition.
Okay.
Or a letter?
It's a letter, okay.
Okay.
Oh, gotcha. All right, thank you.
Just wanted to make you aware that you have that.
We had one commissioner that didn't have one. Thank you.
My apologies. All right, so this is an application that you did see last month. It's since been revised. The current application is for alterations to the historic house that are considered partial demolition additions, as well as the detached accessory dwelling unit. The photo on the left is the earliest known photo of the house, which dates back to about 1968, and on the right shows a more recent photo of the house. And just to note, the revised plan no longer proposes any changes to that front overhang on the house. So, the plan proposes to demolish an existing enclosed rear porch, which was originally an open covered porch, as indicated by the 1957 Sandborne map, which you see here on the right. Staff finds that this covered porch, or the covered porch's date of construction, the location at the rear of the house, roof form, materials, and design don't contribute to the historic character of the house or of the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood. So, demolition of that portion would be appropriate. The plan also proposes to enclose the existing open porch on the left side facade with windows, which could be appropriate as the floor-to-ceiling windows create a sense of openness on the side porch. And this is a sort of alteration that the commission has previously approved as well. The plan proposes to replace a set of paired windows on the left side facade of the historic house with a sliding glass door, which is shown on the right. While windows are considered a character-defining feature of historic homes, the commission has in the past permitted alteration of windows and openings on side facades of a house beyond the midpoint. In this case, the proposed alteration is beyond the midpoint, but the proposed opening is inappropriate as it's an opening type that is more often seen on rear facades. And in addition, the size of the opening is too large for this location. So, given the size and location of the proposed opening, staff finds that the window alteration does not meet the proportion and rhythm of openings that are typically seen on side facades of historic homes, and so does not meet Section 5.2 for demolition. The applicant also requests to replace existing siding and other windows. Staff finds the replacement of the siding to be appropriate, as the current siding is a painted asbestos shingle siding. Also, with the windows to be replaced, those will retain their existing dimensions and grid patterns, and staff would recommend also retaining the original window casings for those. The plan proposes a rear addition that is wider than the historic house, which is shown back here, it's on the, wider on the right side, and also includes a single-story side addition, also on the right side facade. The footprint of the additions more than doubles the footprint of the historic house and nearly doubles the depth. And this is just kind of a map of the area, and I'm sorry, the property lines don't show up that well. So, this just shows that at 130 feet deep, the lot, while somewhat more shallow than lots that often come before the commission, is pretty typical on this block of Paris Avenue, which has all other lots that are also about 130 feet deep. So, this would not be considered an unusual condition in this case. So, the plan proposes a rear addition that incorporates a ridge raise and extends wider than the historic house, and also proposes a side addition. As proposed, the addition is no longer both taller and wider at the same time. So, a ridge raise could be appropriate for this historic house. However, the design guidelines state that, quote, "The purpose of a ridge raise is to allow for conditioned space in the attic and to discourage large rear or side additions." Staff finds that since the application also incorporates a large rear addition as well as a side addition, the ridge raise, as proposed, doesn't really meet the stated purpose of the ridge raise per the design guidelines. The addition also extends wider than the historic house on the right side by five feet. The wider portion is single-story. An addition that goes wider than the house could be appropriate in this case because the primary massing of the house is relatively narrow and shifted to the right side of the lot. So, the plan also proposes a single-story addition on the right side, which you see up here on the right with the full-length window. This side addition could also be appropriate in this case, since the lot is wider than 60 feet, which is required by the design guidelines. So, that side addition is single-story, it's located beyond the midpoint of the historic home, narrower than half the historic building width, and also has a side gabled roof form, which would meet the design guidelines for a side addition. So, while the application has been revised so that the addition is no longer both taller and wider than the historic house, the proposed depth and footprint are unchanged from the design that was previously disapproved. The footprint of the addition still more than doubles the footprint of the historic house and nearly doubles the depth. Staff finds that a slightly larger footprint could be appropriate in this case than what would typically be allowed, since the footprint of the house is relatively small. However, this application proposes a two-story addition to a single-story house that includes not only a ridge raise, but also a side addition, or a rear addition that goes wider, as well as a side addition. So, all in all, the scale of all of the additions proposed together do overwhelm the single-story historic home. So, moving on, here's the right side elevation, which this, you can see the side addition that is proposed here, and the left side elevation, which shows the existing covered porch that's to be enclosed with windows, as well as the proposed sliding glass door, and the rear elevation. The plan also proposes a detached accessory dwelling unit that meets the design guidelines and ordinance for everything, except for the separation between the primary structure and dadau and the rear dormer. So, here are the elevations for that dadau. The dormer on the rear, which is outlined here in red, exceeds 50% of the roof plane. So, staff would recommend that the dormer be no larger than 50% of the roof plane. The plan also incorporates a single garage door instead of two single garage doors, and this was approved last month by the commission. So, here we have the site plan. So, last month, the commission approved the dadau. One of those conditions were that the separation between the house and the dadau be increased to 10 feet. At that point, they were proposing a six-foot separation, which is still what is proposed with the plans that were received for this month. So, while, and just to note, that separation is from not only the rear of the addition, but also from a side portion of the addition. So, while the design guidelines and ordinance require 20-foot separation between outbuildings and dadaus, in the past, the commission has required at least 10 feet in cases where it's more difficult to achieve that full 20 feet due to site conditions. In addition, outbuildings are generally required to be located in the rear yard. The depth of the proposed addition in this case creates a situation where the dadau is not only located in the rear yard, but also somewhat located in the side yard as well. So, staff finds that the proposed reduced distance between the dadau and addition could be appropriate, or as proposed, is inappropriate, and is more so driven by the scale of the addition rather than by site conditions. At 130 feet deep, as we saw in the previous map, the lot is somewhat shallow, but it's pretty typical of lots on this block of Paris Avenue. A separation less than 20 feet might be appropriate, but staff finds that the proposed six feet is driven by the depth of the proposed addition and is inappropriate, and does not meet Section 2B, I-2 of the design guidelines, or Sections 17.16, .30, .G, .4 of the ordinance. And it should be increased to 10 feet, which is consistent with the commission's condition of approval from last month. So, in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the addition, finding that the addition's height, scale, and rhythm and proportion of openings do not meet the design guidelines. Furthermore, staff recommends disapproval of the proposed changes to the existing side windows on the historic house. This is where they propose to replace them with the wide sliding glass door. Staff finds that that alteration does not meet Section 5.1 for appropriate demolition and meets Section 5.2 for inappropriate demolition. And finally, staff recommends approval of the dadau with the following conditions, that the distance between the house and dadau be increased to 10 feet, the dormer on the rear elevation of the dadau shall not cover more than 50% of the roof plane, and that staff review the materials for windows, doors, roof color prior to purchase and installation, as well as the location of the HVAC, and that the restrictive covenant for the dadau be received prior to issuance of the permit.
Thank you, Melissa. Yeah, very thorough. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
I'm Mary Margot Turner. I am the owner, and my address is 210 21st Avenue South, Nashville, Tennessee, 37210. I'm glad that she left that up because since, even, yet, we discussed with it yesterday and then throughout this process prior to me standing here today. First, number two, that was just a mistake by our architect, that item we addressed. We agree with staff's recommendation, and we will be, we will reflect that in our new drawings. Item three, we discuss possibilities with regard to the window, perhaps taking out one of the windows. I do not want to take your time up today because we haven't really gone that far with discussions with staff. And item four, we agree that we will move the HVAC to whichever facade that the staff agrees. So, with that, I would like to cut down the... So with that, I would like to cut down the, our issues to two. And since our hearing last month, we've incorporated several suggestions to fit within the historic guidelines. We've worked with staff on several of the concerns that were addressed during the last hearing and cut down a lot of those items that we could, as provided our hardships, which we'll discuss here today. Staff has been great to work with, have been very responsive from the very beginning. You know, we didn't know much what we were doing, and we came to Melissa, and you know, we talked about, you know, what we could do with the house, and unfortunately, depth is, you know, as you'll see, one of the only things that we can do to get any square footage out of it. So the two items that I would like to discuss, and first, going to just start with the hardship, just of why this house is so deep. If you'll go to the little plot that I included therein, you will also have a bullet point of the hardships to kind of keep me in line, too. So right now, the existing structure, if you look, in which this is atypical of any house on Paris, most of them are actually more to the center of a house, as with standard homes on a lot. We are shifted actually 13 feet to the right side of the lot. Currently, there is an existing curb cutout in a drive that we will be using, which you will see, which goes straight through to our garage door. In addition, in order to even access the garage door with the three-foot setback, which I will discuss later, we actually had to go in from the current width of the home, which is only 29 feet. So that portion is 27. So even with the side addition of five foot, that rear addition that you see, that back bedroom, that's only a width of 25. The largest portion of the addition, which is that small structure, I believe, is only 32. But we are working with an average of 29 and a half of a width. In addition, I would like to discuss staff's comment regarding that it's a two-story structure. I respectfully disagree with that notion. This is one of the only houses on Paris Avenue. Actually, 1408 Paris is the only one-story or one-and-a-half-story house on the block that either does not have a dormer on the front or a front-back ridge with a second-story window. So it's a second story. The reason why the depth is one of the reasons why it's pushing is the fact we don't have a dormer, we don't have much access, so we are actually being able to start our second story halfway between, which creates, of course, you know, more of a depth in order to get the bedrooms that we need for our family. The two-inch ridge raise, pursuant to my understanding of the guidelines, which is to increase the attic condition space, that is exactly what we intend to do with that space, which it will be very low to the ceiling. We could start earlier, but it'll only be to six foot. But if we could see the second story on that wall, there would be two small doors to an attic, which we will be able to access and store some of attic space, because with this modest of a home, we don't have really much storage. It will be an issue. The next item is just some facts about other houses on Paris. The average house on Paris Avenue is 144% larger than 1408 Paris. The second smallest house on the block with comparable lot size is 35% larger than 1408 Paris. Again, 1408 Paris is the only one-story or one-and-a-half-story on the block that either, I just want to make this clear, it's not an "and," it's an "or," does not have a dormer on the front or a front-back ridge with a second-story windows. The majority of homes on that street actually have the front, but there are some that have had the side, but it does allow them to utilize more space in the previously existing attic. The next page is what I would like to point out regarding the footprint, because I understand that that was a concern last meeting, and it's brought up here. And to clarify, we are asking for an additional 138 feet for the addition that we were requesting versus the existing. I know that in the notes, it's a little bit more, but our architect clarified that. But if you will look at the slide that provides the average width, you will see that there are quite a few homes, we didn't pick out, you know, very many of them to overwhelm you, but we wanted to reflect that the average width of footprint and footprint square footage of the historic homes that are currently on Paris Avenue, just to let you know that, you know, while this might be a skinny, deep home, unfortunately for us as well, it does fit within the footprint of current homes in that area. If you will look at 1401 Paris, and you will look at the notes, that actually did get approval to have a dadau in which the covered deck of the back of the house is less than five feet from that covered deck. The footprint of the addition is 155 square feet, larger than the existing square feet. Again, we're asking for 138. And the other approvals, which is exactly what we're requesting, ridge raise, side addition, and a rear addition. The next page you will see is our next-door neighbor. As you can see, they go back quite far. I believe that they have about eight feet more space. Again, we do fit within the 20-foot rear setback, even with the depth of our addition and the lot being 130 feet. With the dadau, that's my argument with the, you know, with the position of the lot being shifted. We really don't have, you know, much, you know, room to go. We can't put it directly behind the house, because then there certainly wouldn't be enough space. There's a current drive that we would like to utilize, since the structure's already there, which we're trying to accomplish, even with squeezing in some of this space. I would like to note that we did receive approval for the side addition, instead of five that was discussed last meeting, to be three foot, as our dadau is under 700 foot now, and that's per guidelines. So now, that side addition is actually eight feet from the home. That rear side of the dadau to the home is still a six that we were requesting your approval for due of our hardships. So in just summation, we're requesting the setback from the dadau to the house to be decreased to six, the rear eight side. Again, this has been approved through staff, which is a house February 16th, 17th, 2016, that's located across the street from our home. It actually received a five-foot approval. While it's a porch, it's a covered porch, and in the notes during that meeting, it did mention that it was, you know, because it's covered, it's treated as a footprint. And we're asking for 138 feet more than the footprint on the existing structure. Again, just to use one as an example, I'm told that there's, you know, quite a few, but I don't have the resources that some of, you know, the developers and architects, you know, do in this area. Our architect could name a few on the existing streets. But in summation, I appreciate commission, or I appreciate you all's time. I definitely appreciate staff, Melissa, but I will have to request, you know, your approval on these two items. And I guess I can reserve 30 seconds.
Thank you so much, and thank you for waiting. Open public hearing? Anyone want me to speak? Name and address again, please.
Hello. William Smallman, 1512 Paris Avenue. I live just a few hours down from this home. A couple things I'd like to point out. I really like the proposal they've gone with. Some of the other recent additions, renovations we've had on our street have been side additions, fairly largable, 15, 16 feet, and it really changes the form of what the house looks like from the street. These applicants actually reached out to neighbors and have communicated about what their plan is, and instead of going wide, they're asking, I think, for a five-foot side addition that you can't see from the street very well. I feel like that's just a much better way to preserve the character of what the house originally was, instead of taking it, you know, 15 feet is a 50% side addition, which is what is standard on our street at this point. So I really respect it. I respect that they have appreciated neighbor input, and I agree that the house is deep, but the visibility from what you see at the street and the form and the feel of it is not nearly as impactful as the other direction they could go with this. So I would hope it gets approved as a neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Close public hearing. Commissioners.
Just, I mean, to me, the, again, the context situation, I mean, it's not, it's not, to me, hardship that, you know, you've got a small house on a small lot. I mean, you just, that's just kind of the way it is for some people. So that means, you know, the immediate context, sure, there are larger houses on larger lots with larger additions, but when compared the addition to the house that it's going on to, you know, that's the absolute immediate context here to consider. So, you know, it starts off smaller, so that means maybe your addition can't be as big as the other people, you know, I mean, you've got a small house on a small lot. In and of itself, it's not hardship, in my opinion.
Houses along that street that could very well come back with something like that as well. Your point is well taken.
And also, there's lots of asks on it. It's wider, it's longer, it's, you know, encroaches, not encroaches, but side setbacks. Yeah, the distance between the nude dadau. So there's a lot of ask on this application, and I think that's where we are challenged with the decision.
Staff, did they come, did they come to you and talk through these, I mean, other than from the original application?
Yes, yeah, they reached out to us several times, and we met, was it yesterday or the day before? And, yeah, and they understood, I believe, what we were talking about as far as the staff's concerns, and yes, there are limitations on the house, so it's not like it was a surprise.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you all for doing that.
Well, Melissa, was, were they open to work some more in terms of making this fit? Just give us a moment, unless you want to, board, would you like to answer that question? Are you all okay asking that question?
Well, I mean, we have, we have an application before us. That is presented, and, I mean, we're not in a position to say we'll approve this. We need approval as it's presented to us.
Madam Chair, if I might be recognized.
Yes, ma'am.
Just because this issue has come up and it's included in your materials about a hardship, this board doesn't really consider hardships the way the BZA does, for example. In order to get a variance from the BZA, you've got to show a hardship or exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or some type of geographical uniqueness about the lot. Here, your charge is solely to determine whether it's appropriate within the guidelines. And also, you can, you know, under the code, you can determine the appropriateness of maximum size of buildings and structures on a lot, the buildable area within which the building can be located, including setbacks and height. So that's kind of how you get there. So I didn't want the board to kind of be thinking about it from a hardship standpoint, because that's really not this board's charge, even though that would be the charge at another board, the Board of Designing Appeals, for example.
You know, and we've often approved things just because of the topography of the lot and made some exceptions in that case, but it wasn't a hardship, it was a restriction, almost.
If there's not any other discussion, is someone making a motion?
I'll move to adopt staff recommendation.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no opposition, so the motion passes.
There's no public comment? The rebuttal is for public comment.
If you had one more minute.
For rebuttal of public comment, but it was in favor of the project.
Oh, okay. Well.
We are now looking at 1404 Cedar Lane.
Okay. Okay, 1404 Cedar Lane has actually some similar issues to the one we just looked at. 1404 Cedar Lane is a circa 1938 one-story bungalow, which contributes to the Belmont-Hillsboro Neighborhood Conservation overlay. The application is for the construction of a rear addition and the construction of a new garage. The house has two previous rear additions, which create this U-shaped plan. Both are rear-gabled. The proposed new addition will connect those two wings to create a unified floor plan and a partial second floor. Some partial demolition will occur. Portions of that original rear elevation and portions of the addition, of the existing additions, will be demolished to accommodate the new addition. And then here on the west elevation, these two small windows, which occur on one of the previous additions that are not historic, those windows will be enlarged. Staff finds this partial demolition work to all be appropriate. Staff finds that, sorry, I've lost my place here. Here we go. All right. Staff finds that the proposed addition is going to be appropriate in terms of materials and setbacks. All is detailed in your report. In this image, we look at the proposed work as seen from the front elevation. That existing roof line is indicated in red. The blue dash line indicates the proposed ridge raise, which will be two feet high and inset two feet on either side, as permitted by the guidelines. The purple dotted line there shows a second ridge, which will be added 46 feet back, connecting those two prior additions. Staff finds a second ridge to be appropriate from this viewpoint, because it's set back so far and only a small portion of it will be visible. Here are side elevations. You can see how that second side gable is being added with a shed dormer off the back. On the west elevation, the existing rear wing was already 17 feet high. Staff finds that the proposed additional three feet of height behind that ridge raise is fairly modest, is designed to be subordinate to the house, and creates the appearance of a one-and-a-half-story house. So staff finds this work to be appropriate. The depth of this elevation is not going to increase. On the east elevation, the existing depth will increase by a total of 18 feet. The footprint of the new addition will be inset by two feet, as required. Staff finds the increase in depth to be appropriate, because the addition is occurring at the rear, the overall depth of the house is only increasing by six feet, and the majority of the increased depth will be a semi-open screen porch. In terms of height, the existing wing on the east is only about 13 and a half feet high. The more significant increase in height in this elevation is problematic, causes the proposed design in this elevation to read as a two-story house. Further, the portion of low-sloped roof connecting those two side gables at the bonus room is an inappropriate roof form for the neighborhood. The applicant and staff have worked together to resolve this issue and have made improvements that are reflected in the submitted design in your packets. At this point, staff requests that the portion of wall outlined in the slide here be inset a full two feet rather than a proposed six inches. It's the blue outline there, that's where the bonus room is. You can see it in floor plan below. This will lessen the visibility of the inappropriate roof form and will help to further mitigate the impact of the addition on this historically one-story home. With this condition, staff finds that the addition will meet the guidelines. Now on to the garage. The applicant is proposing a four-car garage. This will not be a dadau. It's located off the alley in the rear yard. The footprint of the garage does meet the square footage requirements for a lot this size. The height, the eve height, and the materials all meet the guidelines. However, the siding is problematic. As for the proposed site plan, the garage will be only eight feet from the rear of the house. The guidelines require a 20-foot separation. The commission has allowed exceptions to this 20-foot policy in the past, but in those cases, there have been site constraints or other special circumstances, and I will make. And I will mention, because the applicant will probably bring it up, recently, that, this very applicant was granted an exception and allowed to construct an addition that was five feet from the existing garage. However, in that case, the lot was 140 feet long, this is a 170-foot lot. That lot also narrowed in the back, and there was a restrictive easement across the property, all factors that restricted the buildable area at the rear of the lot. In this case today, staff finds that the request is driven by the massing of the garage and the preferred orientation rather than any particular site constraint. Staff suggests that the applicant wishes to maintain the proposed two-car depth of the garage, perhaps it could be rotated 90 degrees along the site, which would create approximately 18 feet of separation. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the addition with the following conditions: the sidewall of the second-floor bonus room should be inset two feet rather than that six inches, staff shall approve the final windows and doors, staff shall approve the roof color and foundation material, HVAC should be located on the rear facade or on the side facade by the midpoint, and then staff recommends disapproval of the garage, finding it's not separated from the main house by 20 feet, as required by Section 2BI2 of the Design Guidelines. Questions?
Thank you, Jenny.
The applicant is here, and now he wishes to speak.
Okay. Please come forward. Again?
Again, my name is Tyler Love Day with Van Pond Architect at 2929 Sidco Drive, Nashville. Our clients Ted and Natalie Meyer purchased 1404 Cedar Lane earlier this year. Prior to their purchase, they asked us to reach out to the MHCC staff to determine if their desires for renovating and adding to the home were generally acceptable in concept to MHCC. Generally, they were, and the Meyers purchased the property and engaged us to design an addition and an accessory structure. We developed designs working with the Meyers and submitted it for staff review as part of our preservation permit application. Staff reached out with some comments and suggestions, we met with staff to review those and presented them to our clients. After that, we returned revised designs that addressed the conceptual ideas of that discussion with staff, but requested more limited design changes to make sure our clients' needs were addressed in the best fashion possible. We are here to ask for your consideration of our proposed revised design based on those staff comments and the needs of our clients. With regards to the addition, the staff has recommended that the wall of the second-floor rear addition at the bonus room be moved back two feet from its present position to decrease its visibility as an addition from the side of the structure. This request would compromise the usability of the interior space and would not make a visually significant difference in the perception of the massing of this wall. We did take staff advice and made revisions to extend sloping roof eve of the ridge raise dormer. Rear additions and ridge raises to the houses typically are requested to step in two feet. This addition meets this criteria and follows design objectives that have been deemed acceptable by the commission previously. We feel that the final proposed design, using the depth of the extended dormer eve, which is pitched at the same slope as the original roof of the house, effectively masks the mass of the wall of the bonus room visually from the street, and in doing so, allows the proposed addition to meet the intent of the overlay guidelines. With regards to the garage, our original proposal showed the garage aligning with the house and approximately six feet, four inches from the rear of the wall of the house. The commission has the ability to reduce the required distance between houses and their accessory structures and frequently considers this type of request. The shape of this lot and the configuration of the existing structure on the site provided an obvious location for the accessory structure, at the rear corner behind the most lengthy extension of the house, for two reasons. It is the widest portion of the lot due to the lot shape, and placing it here maximizes the usability of the rear yard from the living spaces of the house, which we have only enlarged, not repositioned. After meeting with staff, we agreed with their recommendation to angle the garage to align not with the house, but with the line of the side property line, still five feet, still a five-foot setback, per the zoning code. Staff recommended at that meeting a separation of 10 feet between the garage and the main house. We evaluated this with our clients and together decided to ask for a separation of eight feet instead. The commission has granted reductions in the separation of accessory structure in the past for as little as five feet. We would ask for your consideration of this proposal, which is eight feet from the house, only at its closest point, and due to the angling of the proposed structure, that increases to nine and a half feet. This proposed distance is in reasonable keeping with approved, other approved separation reductions in the overlay area. Staff's proposal in their recommendation of rotating the structure across the rear of the property, which was not part of any previous review or discussion, would compromise usability of the rear yard and would still not provide for the stating, stated zoning required separation of the 20-foot for rear accessory structures. We ask for your consideration on these two items and for your approval of the submitted design. If you have any advice or thoughts, we are more than glad to hear them. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, and do we have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so just to be clear, you, what you're requesting is approval with not staff recommendation number one, correct? The, the second-floor bonus room, the inset?
Yes, just to keep it as it is.
Okay, keep it as it is. And then is that, Jenny, is that what you were talking about, y'all worked with them to change, or was that something else?
We did, we had a meeting, and they've made several of the changes we suggested. We asked them to pull that wall back further, and they met with their client, who, I guess, didn't feel they wanted to do that. So that is a change that we discussed, that we did not see reflected in the revisions.
And then you want that garage outbuilding at eight feet?
Yes, if possible.
Since that's not a condition on the recommendation, is that an addition?
That's reflected in the recommendation to disapprove the outbuilding.
Oh, gotcha, okay. All right.
Jenny, did they, did you, we, staff suggested 10 feet, right, separation, as a?
We, 20 feet is what the guidelines request.
Right.
We said that we would be open to at least 10, and then the revision shows eight. There was some, there was some confusion about.
That wasn't, that, the 10, what, was a proposed solution?
It was a number that he suggested, and we said, that seems more reasonable than six.
Okay, okay. Again, that's where we do it once.
Okay, so, public, open public hearing, is there anyone? Thank you.
Ted Meyer, I'm the owner of 1404 Cedar Lane, so thank you for your time, I'm glad I didn't bring my five-year-old today. Probably wouldn't have liked this very much. I've lived in the Belmont-Hillsboro overlay for the last seven years, really enjoy our time there, really excited to have this property on Cedar Lane, we're going to move to this house once we're able to do the things we'd like to do, we're hoping that you'll approve here. We did meet with Van and Tyler previously and talked with, obviously, with staff prior to even purchasing the home, and as Tyler stated, we did receive general approval for what our overall was. We know the garage is a little bit of an issue here. The two-foot change and pushback, that's an additional two feet than it was already recommended originally, so now it's an additional two feet, it's a total of four feet from what the original proposal was, because when we first met with staff, so we're taking further back of that bonus room and that space, so that was a, a major concern for us, as we look at with our five-year-old son, to have that bonus room upstairs for all the Legos that we have, so. We really do enjoy our time in the Belmont-Hillsboro area. We feel we've worked with Van and Tyler very closely and worked with staff closely to come to a agreeable solution here, and hopefully that, that will be approved. Really do appreciate your time again tonight, and hopefully you'll look in our favor of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Closed public hearing. Let's go back to that, when applicant had mentioned that this was a second request for the two-foot setback, let's clarify that, please.
I think what he may be referring to is, yeah, if you can pull that, if we can pull up the, keep going, there's a second, there we go. So if you can see, on the far left, we stepped, yeah, we stepped in two feet there, and that's required for the addition. Then, he is already stepping in six inches, we just requested he make that two feet instead, to make that piece look a little further setback and a little more like a one and a half story and less flush with those two eaves. They did pull down those eve links, which we requested, and they shrunk up those windows to make it appear to be more of a one and a half story than a full two-story, but we're just looking for them to set that back a little bit further. It's just going to take about 18 more inches out of that bonus room.
Thank you. Comments, commissioners? Or a motion?
And the purple, go back to the other one, please, Sean, or whoever is the, can you go over what these lines are again?
Sure.
I mean, the original's the red.
Right, the red is the original, which is about 18 feet tall, then we've got the blue dash line, which is the ridge raise, and that's set in the two feet on either side, like it's supposed to be. That purple is the second ridge, which is setback about 46 feet, and it's a, a second side gable that's connecting those two existing additions. So it's there. Yeah, there's the original, there's the ridge raise. Here's that second piece that you're going to see 46 feet back. We felt like that wouldn't be super noticeable, and with the grade, it may not even be visible from the street, I'm not sure.
It feels to me like staff has made every, quite a few concessions here to this, and they're not asking the applicant for a lot. So I just thought I'd make that, that point.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve staff recommendations.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous? Passes, please. Thank you. Okay, are we at 134 Second Avenue North?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's where we are. 134 Second Avenue North is a contributing building, is a part of an intact row of Italianate style commercial buildings and warehouses on Second Avenue that date from the 1880s. These buildings on that block all extend the full depth of the block from fronting Second Avenue and extending all the way to First Avenue. And although they have two street-facing facades, the First Avenue facades are generally, generally more utilitarian, kind of even originally they were for loading purposes, and they're considered secondary to the, the primary facade on Second Avenue. The building, with a little arrow pointing to it, in the middle of that row, is being rehabbed, and window replacement on both facades, as well as signage on the Second Avenue side, the main facade, are being reviewed and approved by staff. So the proposal before the commission today is for signage on this First Avenue facade shown there. And there are currently two painted signs on the facade, or you could think of them as two parts of one sign. Either way, that signage on the rear will be, the new sign will be applied over the existing sign, or replacing the existing sign, matching location and size. So that's the proposed new signage, as, just as there, the image submitted by the applicant shows, it is just replacing or covering the existing previous tenant sign, signage. The, under the Section 4 of the Design Guidelines, for signage, painted signage on secondary facades is appropriate, up to 125 square feet. Proposed sign, again, two parts, the, the upper section is 122 square feet, the lower 116 square feet, for a total of 238 square feet. As I said, the type and location of the sign is appropriate, are appropriate, but the proposal exceeds the allotment for painted signs under the Design Guidelines. Staff therefore recommends that signage be limited to 125, 125 square feet. And since that would not cover the entire existing sign, staff would ask to approve the method by which the remainder of the sign is either removed or covered. And no lighting of the sign is proposed, or no illumination of the sign is proposed, I should say. There is certainly ambient light being on that part of the downtown. Staff recommends approval of new painted signage with the conditions that it not exceed 125 square feet in area, and that the method of removal of the existing signage not covered shall obtain final approval from staff. And with those conditions, staff finds that the project meets Section 2 for rehabilitation and Section 4 for signage.
Thank you, Sean. Is the applicant here? Please come forward.
There is an applicant, yes.
Thank you for waiting.
Thanks. My name is Andrew Chapman, I'm with Facility Solutions Group, representing my client, Duluth Trading Company. In response to the recommendation of removing the painted sign, which currently reads Nashville, our concern is what would happen to the facade if we try to remove painted graphics? In our experience as signage professionals, there's no real good way to remove painted graphics, especially from a historic facade, as evidenced by the two adjacent lease spaces to McFadden's Nashville. You can see on either side how there's ghosting from the previous signs, which appear to have been painted and attempted to be removed. So there's really no good way to remove painted graphics. And then, on the other hand, if we were to try to cover the Nashville portion of the existing sign, it would also detract from the historic nature of the building, in our estimation. The only way to fully do a wall restoration, in our experience, is to repaint the entire facade, otherwise we end up with a section that is very obviously an attempt to, to get by. So just our, our request is that we would be granted relief from the requirement to cover or remove the lower portion of this sign, and be allowed to have painted graphics covering the existing signs, no larger than the existing graphics.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak for or not? All right, closed public hearing. Commissioners? Any comments or motions?
Okay, so they're, what they're suggesting is to try to remove the Nashville portion and use this, and cover the McFadden part, is that, is that the way you all understood it? Is that correct?
Can you put that picture back up? Just to be sure. There we go. There we go, commissioner.
Well, I, I know that, but I mean, that's, that's what they'd like to do, but then, at the very end, he said that they would be willing, I thought, said removing the Nashville and using the upper portion. I don't know, maybe I, maybe I didn't hear that correct.
I think what they're saying is if one of those signs has to be lowered in size in order to meet the total allotment that they have, that at least portions of that sign, or both signs, however, depending on how they portion it out, would have to be removed. And, and it's not ideal, removing paint from old brick, but it is possible, there are different methods, there's chemical methods. We had a situation on Third Avenue where signage was painted without a permit, and portions of it had to be painted out. So they painted the mortar to match, and they painted the brick to match, and it's just above the first level, and you cannot tell. So I think there are some good options.
But, but, I mean, did I hear that right? That they were wanting to use the upper portion for their sign and then cover the Nashville?
Yeah, like you said, they, what they'd love to do is fully cover the Nashville, but if, and they're basing that argument on that if they have to remove it, it will look odd.
I, I heard that, but I, I just wanted to make sure I heard what they, what they were proposing, not what we're suggesting.
My understanding is this is what they're proposing.
That's correct, this is what they're proposing, and at this point, they're not suggest, they're not suggesting any alternatives. We're just saying that if an alternative is what is the commission, what the commission approves, then we would need to know a little bit more information.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Sean. Sean, if they just covered the McFaddens with Duluth Trading and left the Nashville sign as it is, would that? sign as it is, would that comply with?
Not as, not in our, not how we're considering it, it would not. It would be still part of the same signage scheme, just as it is now, McFadden's Nashville.
Well, currently, it's, it's, it wouldn't be allowed today, the way it's painted right now, right?
Correct. Yes.
So I would, first of all, I want to welcome Duluth Trading to Second Avenue and First Avenue. I'm all about improving the facades on First Avenue. They are neglected, and I'm also happy to have some of it, even though I love honky-tonks, I'm happy to have some retail in that area. It's, it will definitely be a great mix for the street, so thank you for coming. I, I think that, I can understand that, my opinion is, I can understand where they'd want to have their sign on their building. I would be more amenable to letting them have their Duluth Trading sign, and leaving the Nashville sign is a kind of a hardship, because the sign is already there. And so that's just my, my two cents.
I can add to that, in the past, you have looked at existing signage as part of the total allotment. So any signage that they wanted to keep, you've counted that towards that total allotment. Unless it was a historic sign, and then you have allowed for a little bit more, but these are, are not historic signs.
No, they're not historic signs.
So basically, they're above the 125 square foot, or, yeah.
I'm really the wet blanket today. But I do, I mean, this area down there, the signage has been so well thought out and the guidelines set, and we have struggled and struggled and struggled to make sure that we meet the guidelines. And we're very, you know, we've got to be very, very careful, because it's a very sensitive area.
Yeah.
That, I just, I just really feel pretty avid about needing to meet and stick to our guidelines for that area.
Well said.
Is there a way, just, I mean, I guess with the, the recommendation from staff is that they approve methods for removal, is that in approving, once removal has happened, the necessary removal, that it looks good? Or is it just, they, you know, they, they see it after the fact and make sure it's appropriate, or that it's?
Not, not after the fact.
Okay.
That's why it's a condition. We want to know the, the method beforehand. Sandblasting, for instance, would not be an appropriate method, that's going to destroy the brick and cause it to fall and split.
Right.
So we want to know what the method is. Are they removing it? Are they going to try to paint over it? Are they going to use stain or paint? You know, we need to know in what way they're going to remove the section that doesn't meet the 125 square feet.
We, we need to make sure that that's included in the position.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think that the men's and women's gear, it's just my, my opinion is, I think most people know what Duluth Trading does. And I understand what you're saying, we have been ranting, ranting, ranting about signage, and we can't, yeah, I, the only difference here is it's already there. It's not somebody that's, that's doing things all new, so that, that was my only...
There, there are a number of buildings that we can, I mean...
That's still happening. That, that, that was my only...
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
...difference.
Yeah.
In considering that.
And it is Nashville.
It is Nashville.
Yeah.
And just because I love the fact that they're coming to Nashville and taking over McFadden's buildings is...
Is there a motion?
Yes. Regarding 134 Second Avenue North, I move to approve, according to staff recommendations.
Second? There's a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous? We have passed. We are now at 506 Ackland Park Drive.
You're messing with me. All right, so this is a request to construct a new two-family residence at 506 Ackland Park Drive. A permit was issued administratively in November to demolish the existing non-contributing house, which you see here. So the plan before you meets the Design Guidelines for Height, Scale, Setbacks and Rhythm of Spacing, Materials, Roof Shape, Orientation, and Rhythm and Proportion of Openings. As proposed, the infill is oriented to Ackland Park Drive. There is no alley access to this site, so the units will be accessed via curb cutoff Ackland Park Drive. The carports that are shown on the, the site plan are not included with this application, they will be submitted at a future date. So the structure is one and a half stories, and will have a maximum height of 30 feet 4 inches, which falls within the range of historic context, which is from 22 to 31 feet, and includes primarily one and one and a half story homes. Staff recommends that the front dormer not be connected to the front-facing gable, as shown here, and that the material change occur where the floor level changes. The applicant has agreed to both of these conditions, and has already submitted revised plans that, that meet these conditions. So they've, they've addressed those. So the front facade, and then we have the, the left side facade, the right, and the rear. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed infill with the conditions, that staff review materials for roof color, windows, doors, trim, porch floor and steps, porch posts, railings, walkways, and driveway. Prior to purchase and installation, that staff approve a brick sample, as well as the, the location of the HVAC, and then that staff, or that the front dormer be separated from the front-facing gable and shifted to the right, which has already been addressed. Number five, that the material change occur at the floor level, so as not to emphasize a taller second level, which has already been addressed. And six, that new drawings be submitted prior to the issuance of a permit addressing these conditions. So that has already been addressed as well.
Thank you, Melissa.
And the applicant is here.
The applicant, please come forward if you have... Thank you for waiting.
Hi there, my name is Keith Quinn, I'm, my address is 1025 South Side Court, it's 37203. I just want to first thank the commission and the staff for being here today. If I knew that there was a force case, I would have, luckily, my, my wife is picking up my daughter today, so. I think, I think, I think Melissa covered everything really great. So as far as her recommendation, we got the recommendation, and we were able to address items four, five, and six prior to this meeting. I'm not sure if you guys have the plans for, for those items, but, but we, those are addressed, and Melissa has those, and we've already gotten approval for that. But as far as items one, two, and three, those seem pretty basic. I'll continuously working with the staff on getting those done and getting those approved. So, and I'm really just also here in case there's any other public comments, and I'm, and have my chance to rebuttal. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Open public hearing? Anyone here? Closed public hearing? Thank you again, applicant, for, for waiting this long, and thank you for following your recommendations as well. Commissioners?
I've moved, oh, can we discuss?
No, yeah. Do, do we need to discuss?
Move to adopt staff recommendation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? It has passed, thank you. All right, I think we have one more, which is the violation at 144 Windsor. And thank you again, applicant, for waiting.
This one's a little different than what you normally deal with, and, and we're going to have two steps for you, and I'll take the first step, and Melissa Baldock will take the second one. The applicant in this case makes the argument that a preservation, preservation permit is not needed, as the addition is not new construction. The Design Guidelines define new construction as any building, addition, structure, or pertinence constructed on a lot after the designation of the historic preservation, neighborhood conservation, historic landmark overlays. Section 17.40.410(c) of the ordinance provides the commission with the power to review the appropriateness of the exterior architectural design and features of, and impertinence related to, any new construction or improvement, appropriateness of any addition to the existing structure, and the appropriate setbacks and heights. In addition, it meets the Design Guidelines definition of addition. There's two parts, it meets Part 2, an alteration that changes the exterior height of any portion of an existing building, such as skylights, covered porches, covered decks, carports, and portage shares. And it does extend the height. But we mainly felt like it required a preservation permit because it, it is in the setback area. In 2010, this body approved an addition, and they approved that the setback only be 10 feet, when code provides for 20 feet, or requests 20 feet. So not, seeing that the rear setback has already been reduced, staff felt that this reduction of an additional two feet of reduction was, was too much. So anyway, their first question is whether or not a preservation permit is needed. Staff recommends requirement of a preservation permit, finding that the addition meets the definition of new construction, and meets Section 17.40.410(c) for the powers of the commission. Any questions for me?
I remember when I read this, Robin, there was comment from the codes department, correct?
Yes, they all, they agree that it is a violation.
Okay.
That, that is what I was told.
Okay, well, that's not what we were told. I have a memo, if I can just share...
Can, can you please give us your name and address, please? Thank you.
Jason Holloman, 4800 Charlotte Avenue, here on behalf of Jackie and Harden Daniel, the owners of 144 Windsor. As initial matter, we do disagree pretty strongly with staff that a preservation permit is required for this property, for a number of different reasons. First, the structure is art. It's been deemed to be a piece of art by the Chancery Court. This actually is also the subject of a private lawsuit in Davidson County Chancery Court. Chancellor Claudia Bonneman, which you can see in our memo there, has defined this to be art. And if you look at the Metro Code, there are certain items that are expressly exempted from setback requirements. Among those are pieces of art, whether they are freestanding or affixed to another structure. So it's crystal clear in the code that the setback issue is not an issue, because this is a work of art. And where it is not something that is to be governed as requiring a setback variance, it's not something that this body would set a setback for. So it's simply outside of your jurisdiction on that basis. Beyond that, this structure, the picture that you see is not taken from the public right-of-way within the overlay, Windsor Drive. This is a structure that is both too small and not visible from the public right-of-way. You cannot see this from the public right-of-way. For all my time on counsel and practicing, it's been made crystal clear to me that what's reviewed by this body are things that are visible from the public right-of-way. Beyond that, expressly in the guidelines, and I'll just quote for simplicity, the Design Guidelines expressly state, "For purposes of neighborhood conservation zoning," which this is, "Alleys are not considered to be public rights-of-way, and new freestanding buildings less than 100 square feet in area, and that do not have a foundation located in the rear property, are not required to comply with the Design Guidelines." Well, first of all, it's a piece of public art. Second of all, it is less than 100 square feet and does not have a foundation. So on that basis as well, even if you consider this to be a building, or an addition, it's less than 100 square feet. So it's not something that you review. Thirdly, as I mentioned earlier, I have never been aware, and I don't see anything in your guidelines where something comes to you for review if no building permit is required. We have a letter from the codes department that says, "We either get a building permit or an engineer's report that demonstrates that this is structurally sound." We have opted to get an engineer's report, a copy of which has been provided to staff, that demonstrates it's construct, it's struck, it's, it's structurally sound, which means it doesn't even require a building permit. I am aware of no other case in the history of historic zoning in Nashville where you have reviewed something that doesn't even require a building permit. Next, staff has made the argument that this is an addition. First of all, all of the guidelines refer to the addition of habitable square footage. Clearly, this is not the addition of habitable square footage. And if I could read to you, staff argues that petitioner's protest is an addition. Beyond the reasons previously stated, Design Guidelines to Art, the Metro Historic Commission should also find that it does not meet the definition of addition within the Metro Code. And here's what the Metro Code says, 1660.040, defines an addition in the definition section as "New construction projects that expand the square footage of occupied area of an existing building by adjoining structures, adding stories, or renovating previously unoccupied, unconditioned space." Clearly, this does not meet the definition of an addition in the Metro Code. And as I previously mentioned, the Chancery Court has expressly found this to be art. So for all those reasons, we believe that it is completely outside of your purview to review this under the preservation permit guidelines. Now, to the extent that you disagree with all of those different reasons, I would point out that this body has previously approved this screening wall, and she refers to the height of this, the height of this structure is still not above the ridgeline of the primary residential structure. It's still not visible. And obviously, there's no way you could argue that the scale of it is too large, when it's below 100 square feet, which is less than what we even require a building permit for. So even if you were to review this on the basis of preservation permit criteria, it's not too tall, the scale isn't too large, and as I previously discussed, the setback is a non-issue, because it is expressly a piece of art, which is exempt from the setback requirements. So, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Open public hearing? No? Okay?
Evening. I believe it's evening. My name is Nathan Colburn, 1201A Seventh Avenue North. I am the attorney for the developers on the other side of this protest, 121A B and C Lincoln Court. I brought with me a copy of the complaint that we filed in the lawsuit, where Chancellor Bonneman heard a temporary restraining order last week, and she granted it for the, most of the part, finding that the applicants were creating a private nuisance, and that they were restrained and joined for further interfering by virtue of Facebook, and by virtue of blaring loud rap music or otherwise interfering with open houses. Ms. Jones is aware, we've spoken on the phone, about the history of these parties, where, and, and just to let you know, one of the, the first thing that she considers when entering in a temporary injunction is the likelihood of, of success on the merits. And so, in that basis, she's already found that this is a nuisance prima facie. Now, she refused to rule on the issue of the, of the signage or the protest art, she did call it protest art, that is, that is correct, because she found that the detriment to them was greater in that it would cost them to take that down right now, and it doesn't verbally say anything. She dictated about a 20-minute-long dictation order, and, and I'm waiting for the court reporter to get that back, otherwise I would have provided her findings to you. It's obviously construction, in their responses, they talk about how it's constructed, and they talk about, you know, what was used to construct it. Their concerns are the weight of the materials used, the conforming use of the materials, whether or not it's safe, whether or not it will fall on someone. And as it relates to whether or not it is visible to a purview, it is, if I'm, if I may answer, finish that thought.
Thank you. Are you almost?
I was just going to say that...
Got a sentence?
That it's completely visible from Lincoln Court, as opposed to Windsor Drive. It's, it's made to be seen from the street right there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Close, yes? Please come forward. Please come forward.
Tony Harris, 121 Lincoln Court. I do have an attachment here from Bill Herbert. It was mentioned earlier that a preservation permit is not required, and he does state on here that it is required. So I can pass this around if you guys would like to see this. I think it's also attached to the paperwork that's here, so it does show that it has to be done. Thank you for taking the time for us to talk for just a moment. The biggest point I'd like to make is when you look at this addition to the home, if you read in here, it states that on this block that the typical homes are 83 feet of rear setback is the typical for the rest of the homes. This one was granted, although it was recommended not to grant, but it was allowed to be built within 10 feet instead of the 83. So that's 91% closer to our property than all the rest of the homes on the block. So if you think about it in terms of where you guys are, 10 feet is way up here, and we're talking about pushing another two feet towards you, which if I got up there to make you feel uncomfortable, not to mention there's a shark on the wall, but 83 feet is past that wall back there another 20 feet. So it's very unreasonable to think that you can push another two feet into our space. And the other thing that's unique about our property is this is our side setback. It's their rear setback, so they can't see anything back there, but we can stand on our front porch and look, and the shark is looking back at us. So you go out to get your newspaper in the morning, and you've got Mr. Shark staring at you. So I think, you know, as far as the permit requirement, it is habitable as far as it's got access from the backside. You can walk from the echo roof directly into it, so it is part of the roof structure, you know, so it can be walked in there. They can poke a hole in there and stare out and look at us, you know? So it is something that's determined to have a building permit. So thank you.
Thank you. You've waited this long. We will wait.
Thank you very much for hearing this case. I am a physician in town, and I'm the owner, one of the owners of the property, and I've taken the high road, Craig Freibert. I've taken the high road on this case the entire time. 121 Lincoln Court, it's the one that faces the, whatever you want to call this here, a shark. Okay. I have responded to none of the aggressive threats of my neighbor, email threats through our builder. I have done nothing, and if I have, please provide an email that I have sent. It is reached a part that, this is disgusting, yeah. I can read you all this stuff, but I want you to think about common sense. You can see this from Lincoln Court. This ex-counselman, Mr. Holloman, does not live on Lincoln Court. They have no support that I'm aware of, of anybody writing a favorable letter that supports this art addition, whatever you want to call it. I can get into the specifics of which I don't understand. Okay? I'll keep it real simple. This has reached a disgusting, narcissistic, terrible stage, and there is not a historic commission in America that I'm aware of that would approve what you see on that screen. If there is, I want to know about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
May I have my rebuttal?
And how many minutes do we have on rebuttal? Four minutes?
Okay.
Mr. Holloman?
I guess since it was raised, I do want to point out that you actually did receive a letter in support of our position from the former councilperson for this area, who in fact was a neighborhood leader, Council Lady Emily Evans, when they adopted the overlay. And she did write to you today in support of this. Earlier today, when you talked about the home fire, tangentially, I heard several people stand up and talk about the tall skinnies. We've all read about the tall skinnies, and it's upsetting to people. And what these gentlemen have built on the other side of this wall are three tall skinnies, or one one-story house formerly was. That has upset my client. I know many people in my neighborhood and your neighborhoods all around the city that have been upset by this. And these are the only people I know of that have actually effectively been able to make a statement about it. That's what this is, and it's art. And it's absolutely within their right. It's not within the guidelines. It's not for your review. But even if it is, it complies for the reasons that we've said. Thank you.
Thank you. Close public hearing? Commissioners? No, sir. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Just because I was referenced during one of the statements. I have, with Metro Legal, we have done some enforcement on this property in the past, so we're familiar with this property. That is not what we're here on today. We're here on this structure that is, has been constructed within setback. Several things. I don't recall speaking with you, sir. I believe you may have spoken with Emily Lamb, who works for our team perhaps, but I do recall speaking, I think, with, I think, the owners at some point on the enforcement in full disclosure. Mr. Holloman also has tried to communicate with me directly. He and I have been playing phone tag in an effort to try to discuss this case ahead of time, which is always appropriate if we can come to some meeting of the minds. Sometimes we can avoid.
And you did call me back. Did we just point it?
I did. I did call you back twice.
You did call me back twice.
But we were not able to connect. And then, I'm assuming you are Mr. Powers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so we have communicated also with Mr. Powers with regard to this property. My assisting attorney, Emmy Lamb, has also communicated about a previous issue on the property, and I know you and I and Kwan have communicated about this structure in and of itself. So I wanted to make sure that the board was aware as to Metro Legal's involvement. I don't think it has any bearing because, other than just the fact that I understand the case and what is going on here. Having said that, I do feel a need to point out to you just some things, and we're not advocating this is the board's decision, but as Metro Legal, we do have a responsibility to make sure that you're aware of all of the information that we are aware of as your attorneys. Ultimately, it will be the board's decision as to whether or not you determine this is appropriate or not. I anticipate, and don't let me put words in the board's mouth, but what I'm anticipating is a jurisdictional question, which is something that Metro Legal would normally weigh in on. So I'm going to go ahead and address that if it pleases the board to do so. It's our position that the board does have jurisdiction to hear this matter based on the Metro Code in several areas, but one, not the least of which has, I think, already been mentioned, and that is under your powers and duties, 174410(c)(1), (2), as well as (3) and (5). And I'm not going to read all of them, but all of them deal with the appropriateness of exterior alterations, exterior features, architectural features of a structure or a building. Okay? And then it goes on to talk about, in subsection 5, appropriateness of the maximum size of buildings and structures on a lot and the buildable area within which a building can be located, including setbacks and height. And one of the things that you consider when you are looking at setbacks and height is what is the, what is, what is the structure and what are the, kind of the boundary lines of the structure, and how close is that to something else? In this case, it would be the rear addition. So I wanted to address that, the fact that this board does have jurisdiction to hear that. We respectfully disagree with Mr. Holloman. I know he's representing his client, and we're not advocating that you approve or disapprove one way or the other. It's the board's decision, but you need to know that you do have jurisdiction to hear this case.
Thank you.
The other thing that I think we need to make note of is, just like I've spoken with all the parties here, or at least attempted to speak with all the parties, we did also hear from the codes department yesterday with regard to their input on this property. The letter that is in, I'm assuming it's in your file as well, it was submitted to Metro Legal. The last line says that these determinations that were made by the codes department as to what is needed from their perspective, is, the last line says, "These determinations have no bearing on the legality of whether the boxes may be located within the setback." The issue of location within the setback is within sole jurisdiction of the Historic Zoning Commission, so, Historical Commission, and I think he meant the Historic Zoning Commission, obviously, because this is the body before which it is. So just wanted to make sure that you were aware of the information that is in your packet as represented by the codes department, as well as make sure that you understand that you have jurisdiction to hear this case. Now, having said all that, you have a decision to make, and your decision is really whether or not this structure is appropriate. That's your decision. If you have jurisdiction, is this an appropriate structure? And staff has taken a position as it relates to its appropriateness, and you have to decide whether you agree with that or not. And, you know, there was some talk about art and all of that. There is an aspect of the zoning code that does consider art, and I think Mr. Holloman quoted a different aspect of the zoning code. That is not a part of what this board considers. This board has its own authority to make determinations with regard to setbacks and height, and there is no exception with regard to art listed in that particular section. Also, there was a previous case where it did deal with art, and we, and the codes department kind of weighed in on that because that was at that time their issue. So a lot of things going on here, but I wanted to make sure that the board was clear on the information that the legal department has with regard to this case, and ultimately it is your decision whether you approve it or not.
Thank you, Legal. I think we're really clear on that. Okay.
This is attached to the structure. And did we not have a discussion when this home was built?
Mr. Holloman, we are in discussion.
The Eco Garden, didn't we, as part of a screening, didn't we have a huge discussion?
Yes. The same property.
Also, page six makes reference to that we had approved work with conditions to require partial removal of the green wall. Is that the same green wall? Okay. And as of the writing of this report, the correction required has not been made. So that means the applicant has not remedied that. Look at page six. Yeah. So we're talking about the same wall where the shark and alligator or crocodile is on, and really so structural, if we're stretching on structural versus art, that's a structure. That green wall is a structure.
The green wall isn't before you today. That's what you ruled on several months ago. That was just provided for general background. We always let you know about different permits that have been issued and so forth. So what, this first question before you is a decision on whether or not you have the jurisdiction to review the project.
And we've proven that.
First, you've got to decide if that, if you agree with Legal, if you agree with staff, and you've got to make a vote.
So this is a two-part?
Yes.
Okay. Shall we do two-part? First part first? Okay.
Is it a motion?
It is a motion.
I move to approve that, as a body, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission has purview to hear this case.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none opposed? That is very clear, that we have the authority to process this permit? Or not?
Secondly, in regarding to the actual case before us that we've heard due to, you know, what our attorney, Ms. Susan Jones, has stated, and there does need a preservation permit due to the letter dated November 8th from Bill Herbert at the codes department and what he says, that a preservation permit is required, I deem that this is inappropriate.
He's not saying a preservation permit is required. You have just said that. He's saying that he needs either a letter, an engineer's letter or so forth, and he is stating that it is completely within your, he believes, within your jurisdiction because it's a setback issue. So there's a motion in the staff report if you want to move to that second part. If you wanted a presentation about that specifically, we can do that. It's up to you.
You're talking the rear addition.
Right. So maybe best, since we've just taken one piece, now take the second piece, and staff member Baldock can present that, and we can have a public hearing regarding that.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. So a lot of this information has been said, but I'll repeat it as quickly as possible. So staff is reviewing the project now as new construction, specifically as a rear addition since its location is at the rear of the existing house and is constructed onto the rear of the home. The addition has sides and a roof, and extends taller than the existing addition to the house, and it intrudes into the rear setback. So this was mentioned earlier, but when the commission originally approved the addition in 2011, I believe, the commission reduced the setback from 20 feet to 10 feet. This would further encroach on the rear setback by two feet, so reduce a portion of the rear setback to just eight feet, which is 12 feet smaller than what base zoning typically requires. And this was mentioned a little bit earlier too, but, you know, it's possible that addition, the size could fall into the category of additions that are not typically reviewed by the commission because it's so small and located at the rear and not visible from Windsor Drive. However, because it's encroaching upon the setback, it does require a setback determination. So there is the site plan again, and here's a drawing that the applicant submitted. So just a little bit more about the setback determination. Again, it's encroaching by an additional two feet, reducing the rear setback from what would typically be 20 was approved to tend to be just eight feet. We're looking at the historic context for this neighborhood. The rear walls of the homes are typically setback 83 feet from the rear property line. At bulk standards, called for at least 20 feet. So even, this is encroaching even further than what is typical for the historic context. Setback determinations are typically granted when there's a physical reason to do so. So if there's a truncated lot, or an oddly shaped lot, or sewer easement, those have been cases where the commission has reduced the rear setback. But in this case, there doesn't seem to be any physical limitations that would require a reduction to the rear setback. There's also no rear alley to provide further buffer between this property and the one that is behind it, so staff finds that a further reduction of the rear setback does not meet the design guidelines. Staff also has concerns about the height and scale of the addition. The design guidelines call for the open space of new construction to be compatible with surrounding historic buildings. The average lot coverage of the historic context of this block face is approximately 23%. So that's what is average in this area. When the 2011 addition was approved, it covered about 40%, but because of the design of the addition, there's an open air patio in the middle, so technically, it's about 40% lot coverage, but really, if you're kind of viewing it from the street without knowing that that middle part's like a donut that's open, it really seems more like 47%. Since the previously approved addition had already greatly exceeds the typical lot coverage for the area, staff does not find that additional construction to meet the design guidelines because it's just further bringing the addition, or the house into further, further away from what is typical in the historic context. In terms of height, the addition exceeds the above-back wall of the previously approved addition by several feet. It is lower in height than the green screen, but the green screen was, a little bit of clarification about the green screen, so it was installed on the side and on the rear without a permit. The commission determined earlier this year that the portion on the rear could remain, so that part is not in violation, but the portion on the side would have to be removed. So, but a part of saying that the structure, the green wall on the rear could remain, one of the reasons was because it was, could open in nature. It's not a solid thing. It's a mesh. But unlike that, this new structure is solid in nature and extending above the height of the rear addition. So in conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval of the dishing, finding that the project does not meet, oh, go to that slide, does not meet Section 2B-2A of the design guidelines for placement, Section 2B-1B for scale, Section 2B-1A for height, and Section 2B-1C for setbacks.
Thank you, Melissa. Commissioners?
Should we get to it now, or is that already closed? That wasn't clear.
Yeah, you can open the public hearing. Right. So you'll hear from both sides again.
I'm sorry. Give me just a moment. Legal, please.
Right. So you're reopening the public hearing, so that was staff's presentation, so you can now hear from both sides?
Okay.
And you will follow the same format that you followed a minute ago on the other issue.
Okay. So are you representing the applicant then? Or is this public hearing?
I represent the applicant as well.
Okay.
And my name is Ben Powers, and 4800 Charlotte Avenue will be my address. So first, just to address the instant reason that we are here, which is the art on the back of the Daniels home. We're not here for the wall that it is attached to, we're not here for the green screen that it's attached to. Both of those things have been previously approved by this commission, on two separate occasions approved. The green screen in its current form is not in violation of anything, and the wall in its current form is not in violation of anything. And so I'm not sure why the conversation's moving that way, because all we are focused on tonight are three plywood and two-by-two boxes that weigh roughly 80 pounds each and are attached to their own anchoring system capable of supporting 300 pounds each. We have an engineer's report that we provided, per Bill Herbert's request, that approves it and verifies it as being properly constructed and properly attached. And the way that's attached is the anchoring system, the lip of the box is hung on the anchoring system, and then screwed into the anchoring system. This is literally no different than a basketball goal. This is exactly how you would hang a basketball goal to the same concrete slab wall, and it protrudes as much as a basketball goal would protrude into the setback. It's no different. So to call it an addition to the structure is disingenuous at the very least. Even so, your code does contemplate art. It contemplates art under the title signage, but it contemplates that art is signage that is exempt from the code regulation. And so then that goes into art also being exempt from the setback regulation. Yes, those are based on Metro Codes, but Metro Codes and the historic guidelines have a very logical, practical overlap with each other and relationship with each other. They help define the terms, they help define the limits of things, they help to define the parameters of what can and cannot be done, and what does and does not comply. And so if you start with the original assertion that art is signage, then yes, it is signage. But art is exempt signage from the code regulation, which, similar to the setback regulation, it is also exempt from that as well. Now, also, we have been in front of Chancellor Claudia Bonneman for a restraining order hearing in the lawsuit filed by the developers against the Daniels. It was granted with regard to playing music outdoors and a Facebook page wholly unrelated to the instant attached art. It was denied with regard to the art. And as you see on page two of the packet that we gave you, she is quoted as saying, "The mural which the court is going to call protest art. The proof so far is that the mural can be seen, the mural is at the back of the Daniels property, it can be seen from one of the developer's new buildings, and not by the other two buildings that the developer has made." The mural is not what the public sees when the public pulls up to the front of 121 Lincoln Court. Instead, the mural can only be seen with some effort. And here's the kicker. 121 Lincoln Court is not within the historic overlay. This cannot be seen at all from the historic overlay. It's not even very recognizable from outside the historical overlay, as evidenced by Chancellor Bonneman's own comments. And so it's not visible, it's not an addition, it is art, she says it's art, it's been deemed art. And lastly, Bill Herbert's letter says that it is not in violation of any code, but for liability reasons, they just want engineer's report to be sure that it is properly attached to the wall so it doesn't fall off and cause an injury to someone. It is not in violation of a code because of that, though, and even so, we have provided the engineer's report that resolves any and all issues he may have about the structure's appropriateness or attachment to the wall from a safety and liability standpoint. And so for all of those reasons, this is appropriate art that is not violating the setback requirement, and we would ask that this commission find that it is art, just as Chancellor Bonneman has, and that is not violating the setback requirement and not in need of a preservation permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Nathan Culber, again, 1201A, Seventh Avenue North. I have with me here Metro's Historic Zoning Handbook that I downloaded and printed just for purposes of talking to you wonderful people. And on page four, it says, "There are quantifiable reasons for historic zoning. Neighborhoods have greater control over development, stabilizes property values, decreases the risk of investing in one's house, promotes heritage tourism, promotes viable urban housing stock, preserves natural resources by conserving building materials. There are less quantifiable but equally important reasons for historic zoning. It protects our past for future generations, and it nurtures a sense of community and provides a sense of place." And what that says to me here, this does not nurture a sense of community. This, to me, one, as we've established in our lawsuit, has driven down the sale prices of these homes, and albeit they are not within the historic overlay, but they are comps for the neighborhood where they're immediately adjacent. And so when you're pulling comps for selling these homes, it automatically affects the home values of those that are within the historic overlay, as opposed to whether or not it's a conjoining or non-conjoining part. And so that is very important for you to consider while you're thinking about making this determination. This has been a pattern with the Daniels where they go and they act, and then they ask for forgiveness later. We've all heard that expression, "It's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission." And what they did is, as soon as the illegal signs and banners were ordered to be taken down, they had this piece of protest art, as Chancellor Bonneman has called it, put up. What they didn't say was that she reserved the issue of determining whether or not it's a private nuisance. She wanted to do that at the end of the lawsuit because of the cost of removing it. She didn't say that it wasn't a nuisance. It's absolutely a nuisance. It's driven down the comps. We have affidavits that we've provided in the lawsuit where it says that the realtor who's trying to sell these homes, they've done open houses, and the people said, "We would really like the homes, but we can't stand the neighborhood." That's all the time I have.
Thank you.
I wanted to just quickly say. I'm Craig Freiberg, and I have a letter from a neighbor that actually contradicts everything that I believe Ben said here. My name is Stephen John Bartek. I am the homeowner of 120 Lincoln Court, situated diagonally across the street from the rear elevation of 144 Windsor Drive, which is currently in violation of the rear setback requirements of the Design Guidelines, Section 2B-1C, among other violations. My wife and I support the staff recommendation for disapproval of the addition and finding a violation. The average setback from the rear of a structure to the line is 83 feet, per the staff findings available online. 144 Windsor is unlike other neighbors in that it encroaches directly over the setback requirement, and that it does so with a sizable multi-story addition. Furthermore, the owners of 144 Windsor have continuously and intentionally expanded their violation throughout the time that I have lived at 120 Lincoln Court. The intention and disregard shown for their neighbors is best seen in the flagrant and inappropriate murals and sculptures smeared across the rear elevation of the encroachment and tended to be visible from Lincoln Court. There are at least nine children under the age of five currently living on Lincoln Court. These children are drawn to the colorful harassment looming at the end of our street. It is clear that the owner of 144 Windsor has not tried to mitigate their violations and that they wish to continue their trash exhibition. Disapproval of this application and finding a violation is both right and just. I care about my neighborhood's character and the ability for myself and my neighbors to raise our children away from such a poor example. Following the recommendation will begin to address the damage being done to the value of my neighborhood and the poor example the children are learning from your leadership.
Thank you.
Tony Harris, 121 Lincoln Court. Just to kind of continue on, thanks for hearing me again. To continue on, so we're assuming that this is an addition. It's built out of plywood, which is not an acceptable use from my understanding of the guidelines. Also, it's noted on here, you know, that it doesn't have the nominal corner boards. We've spent a lot of time tonight talking about how things have to be exactly right, and they have to follow the rules, and they have to do the right thing, but yet, here's all the basic rules on here that a, that a home has to meet, and this doesn't meet any of them. So, so there's issues there. It also talks about the material that the shark is made out of as being acceptable because it can be used in a window or something of that nature, but I see on here, it talks about lapped siding, and it, and this is the committee, the committee's word, it says, "Should be smooth and not stamped or embossed." And if you look at the definition of embossed, it definitely says, you know, carve, mold, or stamp a design on a surface so that it stands out in relief. So by the fact that the shark head is stuck onto this siding material that's also not an acceptable material, it's breaking up the smoothness that's required by the rules of being, following the guidelines here. So there's just so many problems with that. I just want to point some of those out. And as far as the permit from 2011, the reason why that keeps getting brought up is because the permit was granted, even though it was disapproved by this committee, it was still granted, and the permit was begun, the construction was begun, but it was never completed. So there are open items, there were open issues, they never got addressed, and the permit was allowed to expire without ever addressing the issues from the 2011 permit. So, as we all know, you can't get a new permit without addressing the issues that you had from the old permit, so what this applicant has done instead in 2013, she just built something else. And then she got, got stopped and said, "You can't do it," did the same thing again in 2017, so she's avoiding the fact that she's never fixed the issues from the 2013, or 2011 addition.
Thank you. So do we have rebuttal minutes?
Thank you, members of the commission. Jason Holloman, 4800 Charlotte Avenue. Just want to follow back up on the issue of setback. And I can say to this commission, this is actually something I can speak with a little bit of authority on. And I know Commissioner Nielsen was here, I don't know if anyone else was here, but about nine years ago, an issue that repeatedly happened was that the only way you could get a setback variance in Davidson County was to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the only way you could get that setback variance is if you demonstrated some sort of topographical hardship. And that didn't make a lot of sense in a lot of our historic districts, because folks wanted to build an outbuilding, a garage, something like that, and they didn't want to be 10 feet off of their alley because all of the neighbors' historic garages were three feet or five feet off the alley. So Council Lady Evans and I were the ones that actually brought setback authority over here to the Historic Zoning Commission for the express purpose of letting this body determine whether or not it was appropriate to give people different setbacks, even though they wouldn't be able to prove a topographical hardship. That's what it was for. But that didn't obviate the pieces of the code that allowed permitted setback obstructions. Those aren't exclusive pieces of the code. So what is permitted as a, quote, "permitted setback obstruction" is still the law in Davidson County. And one of those permitted setback obstructions is expressly, "The following may be located within required setbacks." Not the setback for it is, but may be permitted within the setbacks is a sculpture or other similar objects of art. And that is absolutely what this is. In fact, rarely do I get to do this as a lawyer, but I can tell you, the court has told us, it is protest art. Therefore, it is within the list of items that may be built within the setback. And so I think that's why I'm a little bit confused. When I say you don't have jurisdiction, what I mean is that it is expressly permitted to be an item constructed within the setback. And so for that reason, we ask that you grant permission, whether that's through preservation permit or finding that it is just simply permitted setback obstruction. Thank you.
I think, I think we are, we are at our back and forth now. So we are closing public hearing. It is now time to make judgment.
I find that this is a new construction piece in the back of this home that impedes on the setback, and therefore I find it inappropriate.
Is that a motion?
No, that's just the statement.
Okay.
I agree with you.
I will add that if anyone does want to make a motion along those lines, if you would read both motions just for clarity. You've already made the first one, but just to clean it.
Can we make the second one? Shall we make the second one first and complete this one?
Just the second one then?
Yeah.
If that's what you agree with.
We, I thought we did make the first one. Yeah. Okay. So we're, we're going to make the, okay, now we're to the, the second half, Phase Two, Recommendation Regarding Rear Addition. Okay? Any other comments?
I agree with what's already been stated.
Say again?
So I agree with what was already stated by Commissioner Jones. In that regard, in regards to the case of 144 Windsor Drive, I move to adopt staff recommendation in the disapproval of the addition, finding that the project does not meet Section 2B-2 of the Design Guidelines for Placement, Section 2B-1B for scale, Section 2B-1A for height, and Section 2B-1C for setbacks.
There's a motion? Is this second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? So the motion carries. Do we have any other comments, Commissioner?
If they were to come back and ask for a reduction of their setback, I mean, they could do that.
That's what they did today.
Oh, okay.
All right. That's what they did today, was ask for a reduction of the setback, so they would not be able to ask for that same request.
Okay. But they're saying that, that they didn't really need it because it was art?
Right.
Okay. Okay. I just need to be clear in my mind. Okay?
Okay. I think, Robin, is there anything else on other business?
No, thank you, though.
CLG training? Administrative actions and updates? Okay, we are now closed.